Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Milbury City Council meeting on June 25. Can I have a call this meeting in order? Can I roll call, please? Please ask who's not here.
The loading board doesn't appear to be working.
Okay, okay. Let's have a, let's just say, let's do a roll call real quick.
Councilmember Pappen?
Here.
Councilmember Oliva?
Here.
Councilmember Schneider?
Here.
Vice Mayor Holliver?
Present.
Mayor Lee?
Present.
All council members are present.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, let's see this extensive agenda tonight. We have a study session on Calvano Development Proposals and staff.
So, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Tom Williams, city manager. Yes, this evening in the study session is a development concept or proposal from the Calvano Development Company that has been working on some concepts that really at the intersection of El Camino and Milbury Avenue within the vicinity of the Caltrain Station and BART Station. And so, this is an opportunity afforded to the Calvano Development Company to come in and have a discussion with the city council in terms of what his concepts are, get some feedback from the city council, and then kind of for staff to get direction from the city council on where you want to go from here. As you may recall, we do own a piece of property that is, that is just east of El Camino, just behind Peter's Cafe. Kaiser Marston was a firm that we retained to do a highest and best use study, and as a result of that, their recommendation was that we retain the property, we would entertain a lease, and a hotel would be the highest and best use for the city property. So, with that, there's a whole lot of different moving parts and pieces associated with the buildout of that area. And without any further ado, unless there are any questions, I would just simply recommend we turn it over to the Calvano Development Company to move forward with their presentation.
Thanks, Tom. Mayor Lee, council, I am honored to be here. I have a project that I'm going to go through very quickly, maybe 10 or 12 minutes, and then I'm just going to open up for questions. So, we good? All right. So, this is here at the corner of Milbury Avenue. The project's at the corner of Milbury Avenue and El Camino, where it's shown in purple. The programming for the project, the office is about 400,000 square feet, give or take. It has 160-room hotel and together with 26,000 square feet of retail. I'll get into this. I don't want to go into detail on the programming, but if you have questions, we'll come back to it. So, for access, we come in here on California Drive. We are proposing to redesign or redevelop the Kiss and Ride drop-off that will give it flexibility for future programming of California Drive. The hotel component is here. The office component is here. We're proposing to put two more bus docking on El Camino right here to combine, to be added to the bus docking here at the Kiss and Ride. So, there'll be four, potentially four bus docks where there's only two now. We have the crossing at Chadbourne here, which is important. Everything in purple is retail. I think I have a blow-up slide of this coming up, so I think it's better if we wait until I get to a bigger slide. So, this is the current parcel configuration. This is the Kiss and Ride here. This is city streets. This is, I own this parcel. I control this parcel. This is the city's 100 El Camino parcel. So, together, it's 101, sorry, 106,000 square feet. This is a four-level, shared, 860-stall garage. There's lots of synergy between the food groups. There's hotels need parking at night. Office buildings need it during the day, so there's good synergy with the parking. So, this is a better blow-up of the bus docking. So, Caltrans controls El Camino, which is a city-state highway, I should say, and this, of course, needs approval from them. But this is an articulated 60-foot bus. This is a 40-foot standard bus. This is an articulated 40-foot bus, excuse me, articulated 60-foot bus and a standard 42, 40-foot bus. So, the idea is that they would come in on current California Drive, be able to circle around and come back out, go into the project itself, or circle back out. Once California Drive is established, where we'll go, this will be flexible to be able to go wherever the future programming requires it to go. This, everything in purple is retail. This is an office. This is the important crossing of Chadbourne, and so I'll go to the next slide. So, aerial view, we really pushed the building back for a really, this is really a very busy intersection, maybe the busiest intersection in the city. I don't know. But we really pushed the building back for a great deal of open space for the community. This is a retail promenade. This is the crossing at Chadbourne. What am I doing?
No.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Bus docking in front. Next slide. So, retail, retail promenade. This is actually where the 100 El Camino parcel actually is, and that would be where the, be the right side of the hotel. And, you know, over the years, we've heard comments on retail, and we really redesigned this for retail. I mean, this, the building is, if you look at it, it's actually floating on retail. And there was a lot of thinking and thought that went into redesigning this for retail. You know, you can't force a tenant, a retail tenant, to sign a lease, but you can create a vision for that tenant, and we have done that. We've looked at a lot of high-producing retail stores to come up with the way this retail is designed on the ground floor. This is the crossing at Chadbourne leading to the hotel. This is the back of the station. This is one configuration of high-speed rail. There's many. They haven't even decided. But the BART trains are here. After Caltrain gets electrified, it'll be here, and access to the project will be California Drive from behind. So, 10 stories of hotel, 160 rooms, eight, well, eight stories of office, two of which are partly retail, 116 feet height limit controlled by SFO, and four levels of shared underground parking below. So, a lot went into this sense of purpose and community involvement with this project. I can tell you that I, I think between the hotel component, retail component, office component, and the amount of open space that we have, I didn't figure it, it's 10% open space is required. We're far over that. I don't know if it's 12 or 15%, but we have a lot more than 10% open space. And so, we really think that the project is designed not only for the traveler, but also for the community. We think that people might want to come here to hang out, go shopping, maybe meet people at the hotel. And I think it's a project that the community is going to be very, it's going to be received very favorably once it's built. I think that it could be, I, I, okay, I don't want to get too far over my skis here, but I think it really will be such a terrific development that you might, if somebody in your town says, you know, "Take me someplace exciting in your town," that you might take them to this location. So, these are, the project includes three unique mass transit access options that are unique to this project. One is the crossing at Chadbourne, and I think most of you know how important that is to the city. Some people coming from the downtown area do not come all the way down to the end of El Camino to cross at Milbury. They shoot across at Chadbourne. And so, the double crosswalk is to slow traffic down. We talked about it, an overpass bridge or whatever. They don't want that. They really want to slow traffic down so people cannot accelerate to high speeds at this whole block in front of the station. This bus docking is important, not only if, not only because bus, they want to keep the buses on El Camino. It's a lot faster to unload people right here than taking them all the way around California Drive. It only is probably a 30-second walk from this, from the bus docking itself to the station. And so, that's a unique opportunity. And then redesigning the Kiss and Ride is really an opportunity, too, that are unique to this project. And so, I was on vacation for the last week, and in between Camel Rides, I wrote, I read a lot on public-private partnerships. And I did a lot of searching online, and this is a 45-page white paper from the Urban Land Institute. And these are the, there was 10 principles of a successful public-private partnership. And I don't know if I have to go through all this and read these to you, but I want to tell you that what's important is transparency, working together. If you get stuck in a situation that you sit down and work together to work it out, and when all sides are working together, things do work out. And this is the last page of the 45-page white paper, and it talks about the risk and rewards, both for the public sector and the private sector. And I'm not going to read this to you either, but I will say that one of the risks are conflicts of interest, perceived or real. And I'm here to tell you that I look forward to working with each of you to make sure that this project moves forward with transparency and that we work together, because in the end, there's great rewards for both sides, I think. In summary, the project is designed to maximize revenue for the city of Milbury. It's a mixed-use office, hotel, and retail project, provides 500 square feet of frontage along El Camino, 26,000 square feet of retail, 160-room hotel, provides transit occupancy, TOT tax for the city, ground lease payments for the, for the city from the hotel, tax and sales tax and retail tax from the hotel, and provides unique access and transit opportunities to the stakeholders, including Samtrans, Caltrans, BART, High-Speed Rail, and the city. And with that, I will open it up for questions.
Questions? Nobody had any questions? Councilman Schneider?
Staff, are you ready to talk about the parcels of land, or is that premature?
Are you talking about the city-owned parcel?
Right.
Sure, yeah.
So, could we hear about that?
So, the, the parcel of land that the city owns behind Peter's Cafe is about an acre of land. It's more than that, but we have two easements associated with the Kiss and Ride for the Caltrain BART station on the west side. And so, if we're to realign California Drive as envisioned in the adopted specific plan, we can pick up one of those parcels, and we can get a little bit over an acre of land to develop a hotel. Again, Kaiser Marston analyzed the, the size of that parcel, footprints that would lead to a successful hotel developer at, at just about an acre of land would be about the minimum, according to their study. And so, you know, it depends on if the council would, you know, if you have the vision to retain that parcel, do a long-term land lease, highest and best use as a hotel. If you have a desire to sell that parcel, then high-density residential, according to Kaiser Marston, is the highest and best use. In any respect, office development is, is still a very viable market and something that Kaiser Marston also said that could be considered, but from a pure highest and best use, hotel number one, residential number two.
And I'm sorry, I was taking notes. So, if we were to sell the land, the highest best use is?
High-density residential.
High-density residential.
Closely followed by office in the, in this market, but, you know, in terms of the priorities, that's, that's where they landed with their market study.
That's because we can sell the land for more. That's not looking at long-term revenues we might be getting from commercial versus residential?
Well, they're, they're of the opinion that a residential development in a, in a potential condominium market-type development, a developer would, would not really want to lease the land, so we would have to sell it.
Okay.
For that, so that if, again, we want to retain the property, a hotel.
And has that study been made public, or is that still a closed?
I guess it's been made, it's been made public. No, it's a public document, correct. Yeah, it is a public document.
Councilwoman Pappen?
They were.
Sorry, through the chair. My recollection on that study is that the Kaiser Marston did not advocate for selling the property. That was not their, their preference, but they said if it were to be sold, the highest and best use would be condominiums. But overall, they thought the best option was a long-term ground lease for a hotel.
Right, that, that, yeah, their, their recommendation to us was not to sell it, do a long-term ground lease, correct.
On that same order, the long-term ground lease was not suitable for residential. So, to hear, on both points, it's, it came in second if we sold it, but it was recommended that we do sell it.
It was not recommended that we sell it, correct.
Correct, thank you.
That's right.
Councilwoman Pappen?
Point one, I do not want to sell this property, period. Point two, I understand there were some issues with the adjacent land. Have we defined our control and ownership of that land at this point?
Yeah, if I could ask Brad Meisner, Community Development Director, Brad, if you can come up. We have a slide that shows the current ownership configuration and where we are relative to getting title of three parcels of land.
Well, this process has been going on for months, this defining the title. When is this going to be completed?
So, the trigger was, once we had a development agreement signed for a development on the west side.
Which has happened.
It, it has happened. So, now we are in the process of hiring legal counsel to assist us with the transaction.
We have yet to hire a legal counsel?
We have not. We, we've.
Do we make an announcement here in public that we're looking for a land use attorney?
We have found one. Interestingly enough, any law firm that's, that's, you know, a reliable, excellent law firm has done business with either BART or Caltrain or Samtrans or, you know, one of those entities. So, we, we think we found a reputable law firm, Myers-Nave. They've done their, their last round of conflict, conflicts of interest with all of their attorneys that are with that firm, and so we've cleared that hurdle and are now working to consummate a contract.
Manager, just because we might have first timers watching this, can you explain why we can't use our current law firm?
There's a conflict.
Yeah, just so that the public.
I can let our city attorney.
So, there are some interests that other clients that I represent have in these properties, the Transportation Authority and Caltrain. So, we just thought this was an appropriate time to duck out, and we have been encouraging both the council and the city manager to hire independent counsel. And I am glad to hear you're close.
Thank you.
So, there's a couple of displays that we have. One is the adopted specific plan and the realignment and extension of California Drive, which I believe is extremely important. It basically follows, if you can see on the top side, the yellow area, and Brad knows this, so it may be easier for him to navigate through this. And there's really one constraining parcel that we're having problems with, and that's why we have to have legal counsel to help us through it. Right.
Okay, well, I mean, we just want to finalize this up. So, do we, Mr. Galvano has been patient here with us, and I think the city has been patient. The other entities need to move things along here, so we can clearly take a good perspective of what is happening and what we are entitled to do. So, I'd like to see that happen sooner rather than later, so we're not wasting anyone else's time here. I like the concept, Mr. Galvano. Thank you very much for believing in the city of Milbury, unlike some other developers. I do believe, one question is, I think the, as far as the stationary specific plan goes, we have now exceeded immensely our housing requirements. Is that not correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Don't give me a butt. That's not what I want to hear.
There's no butt. I just want to clarify one thing, that we definitely exceed our arena numbers with the approval of the two TOD projects. It's just the affordable housing classifications. We haven't fulfilled every one of those criteria. I just want to be clear for.
Well, what I'm referring to is that the station plan required a specific amount of housing. Now we move on. So, the fact that that element is not in this area is something we'll have to work on in another area.
And I have, I have a question on that regard. So, the Marston project, a Marston study. So, was the, was the conclusion that the best use was housing because of the housing crisis, or was it because of revenue?
No, from a market perspective, it has nothing to do with the housing crisis. I don't think we have a housing crisis. We may have a housing shortfall, but we definitely don't have a housing crisis, but I think it's market. It's, it was a market study on what the highest and best use would be.
So, so in other words, if we leased the land, we would get a lot more money if we build housing on that piece of property?
No, no, no. I'm telling you from a mark, just, just from a market perspective, from a market perspective, what we ask Kaiser Marston to do is tell us what the highest and best use is for the property. They came back and said, under the scenario that the city council. They came back and said, under the scenario that the city council has directed that you want to retain ownership, a hotel is the highest and best use. Now, if you had the decision to sell it, then it would certainly be the highest and best use, from a market perspective, would be high-density residential.
Okay, so in other words, if we sold it, the more, the highest value you would get is by selling as, and zoning it for housing?
Correct, but that would be a one-time sale, and I think everyone knows that in California, Prop 13 residential does not pay for itself. So, long-term, the revenue from a land lease and TOT, transit occupancy tax, would far exceed a, you know, long-term benefit to the city.
Right, so inflation eats up the money we get from property.
And land use.
And land use.
And land value.
Councilwoman Schneider.
So, without getting into the project, and I brought up what the city wanted to do with the land, because that has bearings with where you put your buildings or where you could put your buildings. I am with Councilwoman Pappin, I would prefer that we hang on to the land, that we not sell the land, in which case, if the highest best use is a hotel, the question is where would the hotel be?
We've been proposing that for a long time, three years. That, the idea is that this is an acre, but as, that this right here is an acre of land, give or take. But this is the kiss-and-ride. And what's the balance left, and if you can see it here, it says 19...
You need to talk into the mic, sir.
Sorry.
Or use the handheld mic if you'd like.
Okay, that's all right. It's right here, if you can read this, it's 19,000 square feet, right there. That's the, that is this parcel right here, 19,000 and change, the balance of the parcel. What we were proposing was that we do a swap of land and we move the hotel to a much safer place where it's quieter and would probably generate more revenue for the city. To put it right here allows for the crossing at Chadbourne, it allows for exposure on El Camino, it allows for retail below. And the idea is, you still have 20,000 square feet of land, but now the 20,000 square feet of land would go here. We did not want to get into the details, but that's what we've been proposing for almost three years now. And so the idea is that this would become the city's parcel. These are my parcels right here. This is your parcel, this is your street. This is your parcel, 100 El Camino. This is 20,000 feet. This is 20,000 feet. You would have this parcel here. This would become part of the office parcel. This would become the kiss-and-ride redeveloped. So, let's see if I can go to it here. There. So that parcel that was right here goes here. Now it has exposure, now it has exposure in frontage on El Camino, it has retail below, it has the crossing at Chadbourne. It has a retail promenade here between, it has, and then this is retail here that synergizes with the retail here. This is really a very well-designed project. I think the way it's designed, it's going to be very difficult to make it any better. And so, there's still 20,000 square feet of retail, but putting the hotel back here is not as attractive as having the hotel here.
So, since this is a study session, if I may, so on the calculation of the city-owned parcel, we actually own 32,670 square feet that would be developable today. If we realign, and I need Brad back up here, because there's a couple of points I think I need to make on this and the constraint of one particular piece of property that we're having problems with Caltrain on, and I want to identify that for you. And the relocation of California Drive, per the plan, allows more developable area for our parcel. That's where we get from 32,670 square feet to a little bit over an acre of land. And that's where I think, then, when you start to talk about hotel footprints and amenities with a hotel, that is about, from my understanding, is about as tight of a hotel site as we can get. Currently, the parcels that Mr. Galvano owns, plus the parcel that we own on the corner of Linden and El Camino, only total about 12,500 square feet. So, to get up to 20,000 square feet, we would have to vacate Sarah Avenue and Linden Avenue, and still I don't think it quite gets to 20,000 square feet. Close, but not, so I think that this is where, you know, some of the feasibility and further study and analysis is worthy of, you know, as we move forward. You know, getting to the feasibility. But here's the section of the specific plan that shows the extension, realignment and extension of California Drive that pushes it as far east as possible, that would then align with the approved TOD project and the overall circulation in the specific plan that kind of redistributes traffic and has that connection to El Camino. And it's kind of in that, it's outlined, it looks like it's in blue.
So this California Drive, excuse me, sir, still goes under Millbrae Avenue?
Yeah, so it's realigned south of Millbrae Avenue, is relocated into the existing Sam Trans parking lot, and the parking spaces that are lost with this realignment are actually relocated to the west side of the new realigned California Drive, under and just north of the Millbrae overcrossing. Or, excuse me, south of Millbrae overcrossing.
Vice Mayor Holber. Oh, sorry.
So, have we started discussions? Or City Manager Williams, what, where are we with discussions with all the transportation powers that be over the realignment of California?
So, go back, Brad, to the...
I mean, is this going to happen, or is this going to happen in 10 years or 20 years?
So, there's a parcel line on the upper left of where the hand is, to the left, which is to the north. That is actually controlled by Caltrain, and we have had discussions with Caltrain. And as of right now, they have said that they will not grant us an easement for the extension of California Drive. The other parcels to the right of that line, and a small little square parcel that is at Linden Drive, right where the hand is, those are controlled by BART. That's the agreement, that once we have a development agreement, those parcels will be transferred. So those two parcels are easy. It's the, it's the Caltrain-proposed parcel that causes us some challenges. But we're still in discussions, we're hiring an attorney that's dealt with a lot of municipalities, has dealt with High Speed Rail. One of the reasons why I believe Caltrain is saying no to that is because of High Speed Rail. Previous to High Speed Rail, there's documentation that Caltrans has said, Caltrain has said, yep, no problem, we'll grant you an easement for the extension of California Drive. So this is where we are today. We hope, within the next, you know, three to six months, to have resolution of that.
Okay, three to six months.
Mr. Mayor?
But estimate, I mean, there could be other legal issues that would slow that down.
Vice Mayor Holber? So, unless that is resolved, that would also impact TOD 1 as it's been approved, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I think in my opinion, obviously, we have some work to do with them, but I personally believe we should proceed as if that is going to be our property and not High Speed Rail right away, given the current significant budget deficit in the state High Speed Rail project and the governor's announcements earlier this year that it would likely be built first in the Central Valley. So, I think we move forward as if that's not a concern, but obviously try to work through the issues.
Councilwoman Pappin?
Yeah, Mr. Williams, if, I don't like the way you keep saying if we have a development agreement. We already have a development agreement. BART needs to, they keep pressuring us that we didn't do enough. Now they need to move as quickly as possible here. I'd also like to point out for the record, when we went through the developments on TOD 1 and 2, we asked if High Speed Rail was present. They stood up in the back and had no objections. So, we can go back and clear the record. And additionally, I'd like to point out that the original plans for High Speed Rail were an underground station. They've wasted our time for years now, talking about alternatives, wasted staff time, council time, everything. We need to stop just running around and wasting money, High Speed Rail, and have them go back to their original plan. If we need to politically write a letter to Caltrain, enough is enough. This has to get moving here, and I'm just sick and tired of them holding things up for no reasons. I would like to say, Mr. Galvano, I'm concerned about the passway here, and I do love your frontal on the office there. Wind, 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 wind. What would be done to, we would love this to be a place where everybody wants to go without having to redo their hair, shall we say?
It's funny, I've been looking for that wind and trying to feel it for three years. I've never felt it there ever once. But the hotel will block the wind. I don't see a wind issue there. If you look the way the wind flows, it really, just a little blocking by the hotel, really kind of deflects the wind. I would not expect...
What about your corner, your business corner there?
Here?
Yeah.
Right here?
El Camino, Millbrae Avenue, the far corner for your, there, yeah.
You know, nothing's going to stop the wind there, because this is the front of the project. Okay? But usually when wind blows up against the building, it kind of, you know, you don't feel it as much because it kind of flows around it. I'd like to go back, if I can. We were here when High Speed Rail made their presentation in 2017. Afterwards, we met with High Speed Rail, and they proposed this setback here, and we've always been set back since 2017 with High Speed Rail from that presentation with our project. And so, even if California, wherever California Drive goes, whether it's here or here or here, this redesigned kiss-and-ride allows for it. And so it creates flexibility going forward. And we are built enough back, this is a half a million square feet, that's a big project, okay? We don't need to build out here where it puts either our office building or your hotel in danger. And I mean in danger because someday, High Speed Rail can get back with funding or something, and they can buy out a project, and we would not want your hotel here, if it was built out to here, to be bought out by High Speed Rail. I mean, if we're talking about doing a 99-year land lease, that's, you want that stream of income for 99 years. You don't want it taken away 12 years from now, or 10 years from now, or even 20 years from now. So, the idea is pushing this back in an area that it is safe, that even if, that High Speed Rail has given us this cushion, this 20-foot proposed setback, it may or may not be needed, okay? They've told us that. But the idea is an abundance of caution, there's plenty of development, half a million square feet here, and we just don't need to push anything into the danger zone. That would not be something, first of all, it's not necessary, and so why jeopardize a project if it's not necessary? I can tell you, an office user would not sign a lease on this project, knowing if it's in the path of what High Speed Rail said they will be taking some time down the road. It's not, it would be important not to put a hotel here, it would be important not to put any development here that could eventually be taken away by High Speed Rail.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure, sure.
It's our attorney. We can possibly say, you know, we're just going to steamroll ahead, not steamroll ahead, but move ahead, assuming that High Speed Rail is not going to come, or change, or listen to our demands of reconfiguring their easement. But what is, what is the, what are the potentials that High Speed Rail can inflict on the city or demand from the city? And would we win, or would they have the opportunity to get whatever they want? I'm just looking at, I'm looking at our strength and our...
I understand. It's, I'm kind of answering in the abstract. They are the state of California. I mean, if they come in with High Speed Rail, I imagine that they would have the higher condemnation right to take property if they needed it, to perfect whatever design they were trying to achieve. You know, it is true that High Speed Rail's plans have changed all up and down the corridor, and, you know, the timing of their coming to the peninsula is uncertain. So, that is a problem. It is hard to deal with High Speed Rail at this point for anyone, you know, they're just, it's just not clear when they're going to be here and exactly what they're going to need. But I do know that Millbrae is one of the stations written into the Prop 1A bond fund that was presented to the voters in 2008. So this is a very critical point in the system on the peninsula for High Speed Rail.
Can they, sorry, can they, can the voters of California, if they decide to bypass the peninsula altogether, could they write another proposition that says that rescinds that requirement?
Well, I suppose...
I'm not trying to advocate that.
...the voters of California could present another bond measure, or, I mean, the voters in the future could always undo what's been done in the past. I don't know how likely that is, or whether that's...
Yeah, I'm just looking at, maybe I get fed up with what's going on with the peninsula and say, yeah, we can't afford that anymore.
If I may, I don't think the council should be fearful of looking at a grand plan and getting the, so the tail doesn't wag the dog, that we, the city of Millbrae dictate what we want, because part of the condemnation issue is, are there alternatives? You know, are there any other alternatives that they could achieve their objective before they take the drastic measure of condemnation and eminent domain? And I do believe there are other alternatives that High Speed Rail can implement that are feasible.
If we build, if we build on quick, if we have built a structure or something's been built there, it'd be a lot more expensive for them to do the condemnation, condemnation, right?
No.
No?
Yeah, it's market value, it's market value, so if we enter into a long-term land lease, then yeah, the market rate of that land lease, yes, they would have to pay that value.
It's my understanding, regardless of what the governor may have said, that the EIR is still going forward, and the EIR was supposed to be released, I thought, in 2019, but pushed to 2020? Do we have even a vague idea of which month? So, the reason I bring this up is we're in June, almost July of 2019. I'm more in line with Councilwoman Pappin. We plan for Millbrae. We don't keep waiting, we have been waiting for every other transportation agency, and I am tired of it. And we plan for what is best for us. So, but I want to, Tom, if we've got, or City Manager Williams, can we get a good diagram of the properties that we're talking about and get it posted on the website so that the public can understand and that we can refer back to them? And can we get a timeline at least as best as we think it can be from High Speed Rail? And at the same time, I strongly encourage us to sit down and speak with Senator Hill and Assemblyman Mullin and say, enough is enough. We exist, we have property, we need to move forward.
So, we, just so everyone knows, mark your calendars for July 23rd, because we've invited High Speed Rail to come and have a study session with the council on July 23rd. So, we'll get a lot more information at that study session.
Councilwoman Oliva?
I would agree with, I guess, everybody here, that the project's really, it's a very sharp and good project that we would like to see happen in Millbrae, but, and I think with concerns of the factor of High Speed Rail world, but I would agree with the councilwomen's on the end here, that we need to look in the best interest of Millbrae. And if we have an opportunity to do something vibrant and at the, near the same time of what's going on down there to, for the residents of our city, so that we don't have to be, you know, under construction for the next 25 years, that would be something to think about, too.
I've met with High Speed Rail. They're the ones who told me, they're the ones who put this here for us and for you, and we've listened to them. This is the Go Now project. This is the project that has been set back, allowing the city to make the decisions they want now. want now to go forward. We don't need to... I mean, and last time we spoke to High Speed Rail, which was not long ago, this was still in play. And if I'm not mistaken, the access study that's being done is taking into account the 20-foot setback now?
It's not going to be the City of Millbrae's staff's recommendation, but yes.
Okay. And so this project is set back now. And when the transportation terminal was built, expensive buildings were bought out. You don't want your hotel bought out by High Speed Rail. Even if the risk is 1%, why risk it? Moving it here eliminates all risk.
Question to the city staff. The location of a hotel. As someone who just spent two trips in Europe, sometimes changing hotels every day, what I want is the shortest number of footsteps from a transportation to a hotel. Why is it more valuable along El Camino Real, per the developer? What is the city's position on the best location for a hotel? And we haven't even talked about the city land leasing versus swap. Where I'm not saying that I'm in agreement with this layout, I'm not saying I'm in agreement with a swap. I'm in agreement with the city holding on to as much land as we can possibly hold on to.
Fine.
Councilwoman Pappan.
Train of thought was lost. Go ahead.
So I can answer?
Come back.
Councilmember Snyder. I think that a lot of these questions are difficult to answer because we don't know. I mean, we have a 12,500-square-foot piece of property that Mr. Calvano owns, plus our parcel on the corner of Linden Avenue and El Camino. Now, at that amount, let's say that we don't vacate, Sarah, and we don't vacate Linden, is it feasible for a hotel operator or developer to come in and build a footprint at 12,000 square feet for a hotel? I don't know. I think that's something that, as we progress, that we would, you know, certainly look at hotel operators and people in the business to see if that's feasible. I think the law... According to Kaiser Martin, the larger the footprint, and that's where they said just about an acre of land is about the minimum for a feasible hotel. So we kind of have that minimum that, from their study and the knowledge that they provided us, that that's what we know. But...
Okay. We have 10 minutes left, and we have three speakers left. So I'd like to get the speakers to speak first. Sorry. Okay. So the first speaker, we have Ted Hennig.
Honorable members of the council, I'll be very brief. I am attorney here in the community 35 years. Our firm's been practicing law here for 70 years. And I will make a disclosure because I'm CEO and Chair of the Danford Foundation, and we do have some involvement with Mr. Calvano. And I heard about this project from Mr. Calvano. And I wanted to come forward and say that I have some experiences that you may not have, and I wanted to share them. I'm not hired to be here. I'm here because I believe in what's going on. Mr. Calvano, when I first met him, I recognized he was a man of vision. And when you start talking with him and seeing what he's thinking about, he has some unique talents. And our foundation decided to invest in... With Mr. Calvano in the very beginning, we support 144 local charities, and we give out about $1 million a year. Thanks to our involvement with Mr. Calvano and watching him move along, we were able to share in his success. And therefore, 144 local charities have benefited from that because we distribute a good portion of our income to those charities. So when... You know, my job often is catching people doing wrong, and I have to litigate. And I would like to think I'm very successful at that. But the flip side of that is when you catch people doing something right, you should also speak up. That's why I wanted to take time out of my life. And I'm also a big believer that good design helps build good community. I wanted to come here and say, "This is a guy who's doing something right." And embrace that, and go as far as you possibly can with him. I am very objective about what I've seen him do. His last project was... Started with just an idea, and I think it was sold in the nine figures. And it was only due to his vision that no one else had. And I was privileged because the foundation was participating. I was privileged to watch him work his way through that. And I've been on the opposite side of the business table with him to negotiate on behalf of the foundation. I've always found him to be an honorable, honest, ethical man. I wish I could say that about more people that I've been on the opposite side of the table with. And so when you see that, it's a privilege to come forward and say, "Thank God we've got people like that doing things like this in our community. I'm happy to know him, and I'm happy that Millbrae may benefit from his vision." Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Kathleen Kimura.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, and council members. My name is Kathleen Kimura, and I've had the privilege and the pleasure of living in Millbrae for 41 years. I live on Millbrae Avenue, and I have seen many, many, many changes over these last 41 years. And since the BART project and now the SARA project, I think it's very exciting. I think that those of us who have lived here for those many years need to welcome development. I think it's a sign of the times. It's inevitable. And I think Little Millbrae is... Needs this development. Little Millbrae needs income. And I've known Mark, I have to tell you, for about 10 years. I met him through mutual friends at a charity event. So it's interesting that the previous speaker spoke about charity, because I know that Mark has been very involved with many philanthropic activities. So that's a very good sign of his character. When I first saw this project, I got so excited because that corner of Millbrae Avenue is just an eyesore. And of Millbrae Avenue and El Camino, it's an eyesore. And I think this is an exciting project. It's an inviting project. And to me, it looks as though, I mean, a hotel, office space, and a hotel would attract people like the Westin, or the Hilton, or some other hotel operator that would want to be involved in a sort of high-end type of hotel that would be a destination for not only outside visitors, but for residents of Millbrae who would perhaps like to go to a very high-end restaurant, go to a nice place to take friends to. And I like the idea of the walkway. Excuse me, I've got a... It must be very dry in here. I like the idea of the walkway across from El Camino from Chadburn. I think that it's an attractive route into the station. It's this residence... Excuse me. Commercial properties on the side. I mean, what would I say? Stores and things where we can go shopping. But it's a community... It looks like a communal area where people, I think, would be very attracted to go to. So I mean, I don't... I'm not an architect. I'm not a developer. I have no idea about the rules and regulations, or the building codes, et cetera, et cetera. That's up to all of the professionals. But just looking at this project makes me excited, and I think it will complement the great Sierra project that has been approved, and also the BART project. So I think development is coming to Millbrae, and hopefully, income and Millbrae can do nothing else but get better and better.
Thank you. Could I have John Rahm?
Good evening, council members. My name is John Ram. I'm the Planning Director in San Francisco, and I'm here, not in an official capacity. I'm speaking for myself tonight, and as someone who is very interested in regional issues and regional planning issues, as well as that I know Mark and know of this project at a very conceptual level. Just a couple of thoughts that I wanted to share with you tonight. One is that what we have found on the regional level, and what I am becoming more interested in, and we are talking to our regional partners about, is actually doing projects exactly like this in that we are very... Become very interested regionally in office development at transit stations. What we have found through research is that transit riders are more likely to use transit if it's close to where they work versus where they live. In other words, we are more likely to go a farther distance from where we live than from where we work. We'll walk a short distance to a transit station from our office, but from our home, somebody might drop us off. We might take a bus. We might take, you know, a kiss-and-ride or whatever. So projects like this, we think, are actually really helpful from a regional transportation standpoint. The other reason they're helpful is because it takes advantage of unused transit capacity in the opposite direction. So when the trains are moving... When Caltrain and BART is moving south from San Francisco in the morning hours, those trains are largely empty. This would actually help capture some ridership and some capacity in that standpoint. And lastly, if you don't mind me just quickly commenting on some of the discussion you just had, one of the things... If you assume that an office development is a good idea at this site, and my suggestion is only that it's a good idea from a regional standpoint, then I wonder if putting the hotel on the city-owned parcel today would allow for some development at that corner, or what's left at that corner might be not sufficient to accommodate a major development between the hotel and the corner of El Camino. So I just put that out there as a way of thinking about how we think about office. One of the advantages you have here that we don't have in San Francisco, for example, is very large footprint offices, right? Because our blocks are much smaller. You have the advantage on this site of an office development that could have a very, very large floor plate, which a lot of users are looking for. And so from that standpoint, it just... Just from what little I know of the site, it might be hard to accommodate such a footprint if the hotel development was on that back parcel that you control today. So I throw that out there as just some thoughts, and I just wanted to thank you for listening to me today and allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, former Mayor Marc Colopietro.
Before I start my comments, I did want to interrupt during the question session, but I'd like to make a request that, going forward, when we're talking about the city properties, that they be identified maybe as a name so we can know that it's a parcel on the east side of Peters Cafe, or whether it's the parcel where the old Zaxx was. We relate to that better rather than not being able to see clearly what the cursors are moving to. So that would be very helpful. Thank you for your consideration about that. So traditionally, when I... What I do when I hear a developer wants to propose a project in Millbrae is I look at their website. I followed that when I learned that Calvano Development was presenting a project in this study session. When I saw the preliminary proposed project, I thought it was stunning. I thought this will really put Millbrae on the map, along with the Gateway at Millbrae Station and the SARA Station projects. When I saw the Millbrae Station-Calvano project from all different sides, because there are on the website different sides to look and angles, my opinion is that the design, unique unto itself, will balance out Millbrae Avenue as well as El Camino. It will add enrichment to the station area real and surrounding areas. It would add enrichment to the diversity of Gateway and SARA Stations. It will bring opportunities for the closest accessibility to our downtown and add value to our small downtown that many of us hold dear. The project will also add to the diversity of our community from an economic perspective. When all is said and done, the three Millbrae Station area-specific projects will help our community thrive and prosper. I hope council will keep an open mind about this project and encourage staff as well to keep an open mind, for all fairness, and staff to work closely with the developer to make yet another great addition to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we have to adjourn. Unless there's any pressing questions, I'd like to adjourn the meeting.
I just have one.
Okay.
One question and one comment. So first of all, one question. My understanding, for the city manager, my understanding is that we are currently in the process of developing some type of RFP, RFQ selection process to determine the development for the city-owned site. Is that correct?
Correct. But we won't release that until we have title of those three parcels. Correct.
And then, just as a comment, I want to say to Mr. Calvano, first of all, I appreciate the vision and the concept that has been promoted. I really do like the concept and the idea of trying to get the best use out of that area. I do have a couple of concerns regarding some inconsistencies with the station area-specific plan, specifically in terms of the circulation element. The specific plan does keep both SARA and Linden open as vehicular streets. This proposal basically blocks that off. I think it is... And I understand you want to maximize the square footage in this area, but I think it is important as a relief for the increased traffic that we'll be seeing with the MSASP built out. As well as the crossing at Chadbourne, that's also something that was not included in the specific plan, and I think for a reason. I believe it will create a lot of congestion on El Camino. I do like the idea of having, you know, enhanced pedestrian access to the station, but coming from Millbrae Avenue, making a right turn on El Camino, you'll hit that stoplight almost instantly. So I don't think that's the best place for a pedestrian crossing. But, you know, I think as we move forward, either with you, or with however we want to develop the, you know, the city-owned parcels, these are all issues I think that can be worked out, you know, however that happens.
We're running over time, so unless you feel you need to.
Yeah. Just briefly.
The planning commission came up with the two park... The two crosswalk, the double crosswalk. That wasn't us. We were just following your own planning commission. And we were here during the studies when you hired consultants, and they came up with that. So we implemented that.
Yeah. I believe it may have been from the general plan consultants that we've had look at it, but it was, I think, intentionally not included in the station area-specific plan, which we spent quite a bit of time developing and approving, you know, before any of the TODs were approved.
Okay. Councilwoman Snyder, 10 seconds.
Okay. I actually disagree with Vice Mayor Ruben... Vice Mayor Hallibur. I don't see the point in keeping Linden and SARA Station. It's my understanding that a lot of the operations that you need to do in the back of those existing buildings could be handled in underground parking. And we're too small to waste valuable space on streets when it can become a pedestrian walkway. So I actually like that aspect. At recent Grand Boulevard meetings and at a tour, we looked at a corner just like that in Redwood City that they had tried to activate, and it failed. So I would just encourage you to look at what Grand Boulevard is looking at for these big corners, to make them successful. It just... It was so noisy on this corner, and they tried to create a place where people could hang, and it never worked. So just look at it.
You can't fail because it's our land, and we're giving it to you. So...
Failing... It didn't become the active use that they had intended when they designed it that way.
It is a busy street. Yes. We're flexible.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So I'm going to end this special meeting of the six o'clock meeting for study session for the Calvano Development Project. I'm going to roll right into the regular meeting, if that's okay with the council. Can we roll right into the next meeting? Okay. Yes. What do you mean? You have to cut it off? All right. We've got to take a two-minute break. Okay, now they turned me on. Okay. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Milbrae City Council of June 25th. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Papin.
Here.
Councilmember Oliva.
Here.
Councilmember Schneider.
Here.
Vice Mayor Holliber.
Present.
Mayor Lee.
Present.
All council members are present.
And can I ask, Anne Kirk, Kirkbridge?
Kirk.
Kirk, right? Can you, it's spelled wrong. Could you, could you mind leading us in a pledge of allegiance? Would you like to lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Anne. Yeah, it's spelled, sorry. Anne, we have a special, we have a special presentation, and following this presentation by the Vice Mayor, we're going to have a 15-minute reception afterwards. So please hang out. And staff has put out a really nice spread. Vice Mayor, it's all yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one of the great moments of the year when we get to acknowledge our committee and commissioners and committee members for their hard work that they do for the city, all on a volunteer basis. And we've had a number of commissioners and committee members that have given many years of service to the community, and I would like to honor them this evening. So we will begin with actually a couple of service pins that are overdue. They were somehow missed a couple of years ago. But we have one. Unfortunately, she cannot be here tonight for Julie Turner for the Parks and Recreation Commission. Congratulations. Thank you, Julie. As well as John Kiefer. John, you're here. Okay. Thank you, John.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And that is a five-year service pin. Also, a five-year service pin for the Parks and Rec Commission. This one is not late. This is for 2019. Chris Del Negro unfortunately cannot be here tonight, but he's given a lot of service to the community and has, was a very significant help with our Measure II campaign last year and really getting the word out about the community centers, done a lot of work on getting, on the planning process for that new community center that we would like to get moving on very shortly. We also have from the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee for five years of service, John Sosario. John, you here? There you are. That's a very important committee, I know, has done some good work recently with trying to get the community benefit districts set up downtown, or BID, Business Improvement District. So thank you for your leadership on that. We have tonight celebrating 15 years of service on the Senior Advisory Committee, Mimi Lynn. Mimi, there you are. We have a very active senior community here in Milbrae, and thank you for your service for 15 years. It's a long time. But we also have tonight 25 years of service, and quarter of a century on the Sister Cities Commission, somebody who has helped to really build the relationship with Los Aramosi Chile. I know I've visited there a few times, as well as to get the sister city relationship with Most Amalta going, as well as Hanyu, Japan, the friendship city. Tom Doughty, are you here? Tom, 25 years. And we also have a very special award to give out tonight. I think our longest-serving committee member in Milbrae, 40 years of service. That's, I think that is unparalleled. We have Anne Kirk-Bride, Community Enhancement Advisory Committee.
You must have started when you were 10.
So thank you to all of you. And can we have all of our commissioners and committee members who are present, please stand to be acknowledged? Thank you all. It's a very hard-working group of people, and touching many different aspects of our community here in Milbrae. We cannot do what we do without you. So thank you all for your service, and we will be taking a brief recess from the meeting for about 15 minutes. We'll be going over to the City Hall lobby, and we have some refreshments there. So please come and join us. And then we will reconvene in about 15 minutes at
Okay, thank you. Welcome back to the Millbrae City Council meeting of June 25th. We just completed, the Vice Mayor just completed the Commissions and Committee Service Pins. Thank you Vice Mayor Holber. And also before we resume our meeting, I also like to, we have some happy announcements. And this is something I think we should do more often, and it's to announce births. So I'd like to also thank, I mean congratulate Jonathan and Jen Goodman for the arrival of Joa, is that right? Joa Levi Goodman. Congratulations.
New Millbrae resident.
New Millbrae residents, so we're growing our numbers. And of course Dominic James Kacha of, yeah, which is Anthony and Stephanie Tiffany Kacha. And that's really great news. So we'll hopefully add more lions too, so. Okay, so anybody else likes to make a birth announcement? We would love to receive them. Okay, so we have a presentation by the Park and Recreation Commissioner, John Kiefer. It's John.
It's Delton Park.
Okay, can somebody go?
He was probably sight tracked.
So this is where the City Council is recognizing the Park and Recreation Commission, sorry, Parks and Recreation Month. And this is Park and Recreation, most people don't give it much thought until they want to have to do something other than sit at home and watch television. So I wish, you know, this is great, I wish my kid would go out more. He was involved in soccer and didn't able to do that, the parks had to be available. And we have one of the best fields in the county, so I very much appreciate. And also we have very great youth and senior programs, and now we have adult programs, which is phenomenal. And of course the Park and Recreation includes the Community Center, which we are working hard on, and the Park Recreation Department's been working very hard on. And just lately we had our movies in the park. So Movies in the Park every third Friday of the month at dusk. And it's getting warmer, we had a really nice event last Friday, so I hope you go to that as well. And we're going to start Beats and Brews in downtown middle of Millbrae on Broadway. And it's going, we're going to close off Part of the Road, free concert, food, not free food, but food offered by the adjacent restaurants. And so we hope to get the community out there. And also we just recently built a community garden. So Park and Recreation is very, very, very active. And I'd like to present this to the Chairman of the Park and Recreation Committee, Commission.
Well, thank you very much. After you accept it. All right. Yeah, I was going to say something. Oh, that's great, because I have that on my phone. But Mayor Lee, thank you very much for giving this proclamation. I would like to say we've actually been pretty busy this year, and you listed a few of the things, projects that we have actually accomplished. But it couldn't have happened without the City Council helping us achieve our goals, and especially Councilman Holber, who is our liaison. So we'd like to recognize you, and thank you for attending our meetings and putting up with us. Also Councilwoman Gina Pappin and Annie Aliva for their work and input on the recreation center design and supporting our commission. And thanks go out to Councilwoman Ann Schneider and Mayor Wayne Lee for their involvement and hands-on and digging in the dirt, I think is what I hear, for getting the community garden on the north end of Central Park is location. And that's been a dream of ours for quite some time, and finally it's great to see the realization. And every time I've been out there, somebody's come up to me and said, wow, how do I actually get a plot? And I have to tell them where the website is and all that. It's only about $90 to get one of those. I'd like to give special thanks to Mackenzie Brady, our Parks and Recreation Director, who attends all of our meetings, keeps us organized, and is a catalyst for advancement in city recreation, and also her staff. And City Manager Tom Williams, who's just been a great champion for everything that we do, is always there, answer our questions and to help us out. Thank you very much. Ken Crisity, our Parks Superintendent, and John Gianoli, our Parks Field Supervisor, for all the great work they do keeping Millbrae green and maintaining our players for both kids, and as you said, Mayor, adults. We do have now adult basketball, we have a volleyball league, it's been formed, of course soccer, one of something that I play and get injured in and hurt every Thursday morning. Also Key Lim, our Parks and Work Director and his staff, for providing ideas, charts, maps, and solutions. They really do go above and beyond, and were very, very helpful. And we actually, our subcommittee is the BPEC Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And we were at the bike rodeo, and they provided us all kinds of maps that we were able to get out to the public and do some outreach. So some of the achievements, I think you've covered a few of these, but the gazebo on Library Street, we're very proud that we're able to salvage that and get that up into a very visible location. I think we're going to get a lot of use out of that, it's great to see people sitting in the benches, and hopefully we'll have some musical acts that will be appearing there. And I think we're going to do an intro to summer, maybe? That's something on the agenda. Obviously the community garden, all ages can go out there and work together, and we can learn a little bit more about the food that we eat, healthy food, where it comes from, it's not necessarily at Safeway. And let's see, our new community center, we're going to have that one day, I know it. And if you've been seeing all these green lanes all over the streets of Millbrae, well that's something that we have done through a lot of grant money, so it's not costing the city nearly much of anything, really, when you get down to it, all through our grants. And it's fantastic to finally have safe streets, we're working toward that goal, we're continually working on it, to have safe routes to schools and have safe passage and mobility around the city of Millbrae. We are working on linking the spur trail for a safer route around the city, and more grants, and more money is coming in. We have the formal establishment of the BPEC, which the Council charged us with and said, make that happen, so we did. Resurrection of the skate park, which was a little bit interesting, that groups, when you go out and you talk to the community, sometimes there's a lot of anger and hostility. But now I think it's really a good working relationship with the people that use the skate park, and so it's good to see that up and operating again. And I think that, I see people out there at night, and they're not doing damage, they're actually enjoying the facility. The bike rodeo is a great chance to get a lot of kids out there and hand out helmets, a great community event, safety, preaching safety, safety, safety for our kids. And thanks to the members of our commission, which would be Julie Turner, Christopher DelNegro, both of them are absent tonight, and Dan Quigg, I think Dan may be, he may be partying out there, or, Mr. Dan Quigg, that is the Council, thank you very much, and we certainly appreciate this.
Any comments and questions from the Council?
If I may, Mayor, I'd like to also thank John Kiefer for leading the Park and Rec Committee, and thank you all Park and Rec Committee members. And with that, we'd like to present John with a beautiful public look hat.
All right, yeah.
And the bottle. Thank you, John.
Thank you Director E. Lim and Deputy City Manager, Vice Mayor Holber.
Yeah, just one comment, well, thank you, John, for all the hard work, and glad we finally got to honor your service pin tonight. One thing I just learned last night about the Recreation Commission, one of our longtime staff members, Charlene O'Connell, has announced her retirement at the end of this week, I believe, so I'd like to thank her for her many, many years of service to the Recreation Department, and wish her best of luck and a happy retirement.
Councilman Schneider.
I would only add, Charlene is the staff person for culture arts, so it was a good year for culture arts with the kickoff of the utility project, Charlene was instrumental, as she was for the return of the art show after an eight-year hiatus. I want just to talk about what Commissioner, Park and Rec Commissioner Chair said about the garden. There are still, as of a few days ago, four plots available on the lower section, which is the one for mobility issues, you're just right off of Lincoln Circle, and there are eight, this was as of Monday, Monday morning, eight left up on top of the hills. So if you are still looking for your garden plot, I have heard that some people have already planted, and it's off and running. So 12 plots to go, and we're sold out. Thank you.
Congratulations. Vice Mayor Holber, do you, oh, so we also want to thank Charlene for her service, she was a long-term advisor to the seniors and sister city committee, so again, thank you, Charlene, and hopefully we can recognize her for her long service to the city. Okay, so we have the report out from the City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening and good evening, City Council. Again, Tom Williams, City Manager. So we know that 4th of July is just about a week away, and wanted to make sure that everyone knew that fireworks are legal here in the city of Millbrae. So together with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office and Central County Fire, we would like to remind everyone that fireworks are legal, and they do put our community in danger. So be safe this upcoming 4th of July, and help protect our community by not lighting fireworks. And next week we also announce locations throughout the Bay Area where local residents can go and watch fireworks, that will be accessible on our website. We have an upcoming traffic calming workshop for the community that will be held on Thursday, July 18th, here at the city of Millbrae. It will start at 6:00 PM. City staff will lead a community discussion to identify areas of local concern in terms of mobility, resident traffic calming, unsafe streets and intersections, ideas to reduce speed, and we want to get the thoughts and concerns of all the neighbors and business owners in the city of Millbrae. So it will be held here in the City Council chambers, actually, again, July 18th, 6:00 PM, a traffic calming workshop for the community. Also the recent congestion on Millbrae Avenue, I'm sure that all the council members in the community are aware of that, and that's due to construction at SFO, as well as the relocation of the rideshare pickup and drop-offs at the central garage at SFO. The airport changed its policies to where now TNCs or Uber and Lyft are only allowed to pick up and drop off in the parking garage, they are no longer allowed to drop off and pick up in the terminals. And the technology is so sophisticated that if any driver, Uber and Lyft driver, are actually in an area that they don't belong, they do not get a signal. And so that has actually created congestion on Millbrae Avenue at the 101 Millbrae Avenue Intersection East. And if you haven't been out there, it's pretty horrific, I mean, there's hundreds, thousands of cars in the evening. So we have already reached out to SFO, their Traffic Engineering and Planning Department, they've taken steps as of Sunday. We will continue to work with them, as well as Lyft and Uber, and I know Mayor, you had sent a letter that will be forwarded to both of those companies as well. So we're aware of it, and we're working on solutions. And then, let's see, as you had mentioned, July 11th, which is the second Thursday of July, and also August 8th, the second Thursday of August, we do have our Beats and Brews, that will be on Broadway between Hillcrest and La Cruz, it will start at 5:00 PM. The band will start actually at 6:00 and go two hours, 6 to 8. We'll have a beer garden, we'll have a root beer garden for the kids, but it is a family event. The local restaurants will be allowed to serve food out on the sidewalk and out in the street. So we're looking forward to a good crowd and a great partnership and integration with our, with our our, with our business community. So, hopefully, everyone can come out on July 11th for that event, as well as August 8th.
How long's it going to last?
So, the band will stop at 8 o'clock, so from 6:00 to 8:00 for two hours. And the event itself will probably go till 8:30, 9 o'clock. So, moving to the council agenda, after this item of the overview and staff briefing, and you have the calendar of events and reports of bills and claims in your agenda packet, this evening, item number three, there are no minutes to approve. Item number four, there are no oral reports from city committees or commissions this evening. After that, there's public comment, and that's for anybody in the public that wishes to speak three minutes on an item not on tonight's agenda. After public communication, we move to the consent calendar. Item number five is the first item on the consent calendar, and that's consider appointments to city commissions and committees. Item number six is a resolution accepting the Hillcrest Basin Sewer Rehabilitation Project as complete and filing the notice of completion. Item number seven is to reject by motion two bids that we received for the fiscal year 2018-19 Water Pollution Control Plant Improvement Project. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the city manager or designated to exercise the two remaining one-year contract options for the agreement for professional services with Stepford Incorporated, their information technology support company. Those services are in the amount not to exceed $150,000 per year, that's the base service contract. Issue an addenda in an aggregate amount not to exceed $50,000 per year for additional services. These are specialty services that come up throughout the year. And then also authorize the purchase of additional software, hardware, and related technology items that come up throughout the year, and that amount would be not to exceed $100,000 per contract year for the two-year period. Following the consent calendar, we move into the public hearing portion of the agenda. Item number nine is to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 5.95, our Smoking Control Ordinance, which is Title V of the Milbrae Municipal Code, to prohibit smoking in multi-unit residential housing and provide for regulating outdoor smoking in the vicinity of such units and outdoor spaces. Item number 10 is new business, an informational report on the development of a data center at the city's Aviator Storage Art. This is an information item in direction of city council for us to proceed with the release of the RFP. Item number 11 is to consider formation of a city council ad hoc subcommittee to address opportunities for economic development and strategic alliances with San Francisco International Airport. After that item, we move to council comments, and we do have a closed session item on the agenda this evening, and that's a conference with labor negotiators for a labor contract with our two unions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Councilwoman Aliva?
Can I just add, for public comment, those that want to speak, you have to fill out a speaker slip? Thanks.
Okay, no other questions? All right, so moving on. Thank you very much, City Manager Tom Williams. Approval, thank you and staff for phenomenal programming for this summer. Okay, there's no minutes to approve, no oral reports, so I think we already did that. So, we're on to public communications. Again, as City Manager stated, this is an opportunity for anybody to speak on items that are not on the agenda. The council cannot take action on that, and anything spoken about those items is not the views of the city. And if you see the yellow light, then you have 30 seconds to sum up. So, Laura Pascoe? Pascoe? Sorry, Laura.
In October 2017, ex-Governor Brown passed AB 967 to do liquid cremations. The bodies will be cooked at a high temperature in a vat of water and lye, then put down the drain. The pH of the discharged wastewater is over 11, and it will corrode the sewer lines. Those of us who drink part toilet to tap, we will be drinking the recycled treated water. It's cannibalism. There's no regard to how this affects our health and the aging infrastructure. Currently, Idaho is the only state where cannibalism is illegal. It needs to be a federal law. Contact your legislatures to make it a federal law, and in the meantime, each city needs to ban liquid cremations. If no permits are issued, we can stop this before it starts, and it starts in 2020. How would you feel if you drank the body of someone that died from AIDS? Do you want your babies and children's drinking this? Think about how the chemicals are used in these cremations, and when they're being recycled over and over. As more bodies are added, the more toxic the water will be. Do you care about your health? If it disintegrates dead people, what will it do to us as we drink it and bathe in it? Water is vital for life. It should be pure, no dead bodies added. The Catholic Church has strict regulations regarding cremations. The remains must be buried together in a cemetery or sacred location. The ashes may not be scattered, exhibited in a home made into jewelry, cremation diamonds or art. Putting remains down the drain for us to drink is not a sacred location. It's sick. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Winn Girkich?
I'm here on the same issue about AB 967. And the reason most people didn't know about this is because it wasn't in the local papers. This is Mark Levin's, what, Unfreedom of the Press book? Yeah, this is part of it. So, they can sneak this in. In 2011, it was supposed to start in July, and we got it stopped. It came back as Assembly Bill Four, and we got it stopped again. And then, I found out last year that this thing went through in 2017, and I was crying because I did everything in my power to get it stopped in 2011. And everybody that's sitting on your butts and not thinking you've got to do anything, I said, "I'm only one vote. You need to call Jerry Hill, you need to call Assemblyman Mullen, and call Gavin Newsom." Because this whole state's going toilet to tap. And when you put these chemicals to disintegrate this body, and it mixes with other organic matter and more chemicals in the drinking water, it will make the water more carcinogenic. And what's really amazing is that in the toilet to tap water now, they can't get the medicines out. So, when they make this brown, liquidy syrup to pour down the drain, and somebody died of an overdose of all kinds of things, and every senior citizen that dies that was on, my dad was on 12 pills before he died, then he put him on morphine, and he died of cancer, and he had sepsis and all kinds of other bad stuff. But just think of every citizen or somebody just in cancer dying with the morphine. How much morphine's going to be in that water? It's going to go up exponentially. So, just think, if they can't get the medicines out now, everybody that ODs, you're going to add more opiates and all kinds of good stuff in that water. But the sickening thing about this whole stuff is that you didn't know. And everybody thinks that I'm going to get it stopped. I have hit every city on the peninsula. We just went to San Bruno before we came here, and I was in South City last week. I'm going to every city council. We've got six months to get this stopped, and if you don't make these phone calls, you can't stop things. There is hope, and you can do it. We've got less than six months. They haven't started it yet, they haven't given permits to get these water cremation things, and if every city banned this, we wouldn't have a problem, would we? So, you can do something. Get off your butts and make some phone calls and call these legislators. We can vote them out as quickly as we voted them in. And if this is what you want to drink in your drinking water, I was a hairdresser over 30 years, and guess what? Every man that I worked with died of AIDS, all of them. And I don't think you'd want that in your drinking water. And if you saw what they looked like before they died, it was unbelievable. And I'll tell you something, this is something that the public has got to stop, and I can't do it alone. And my sister and I are going every place that we can go, and we need you to help out too. And I'll tell you something, did you know that Marin County banned the 5G cell towers? And so did Mill Valley, and so did San Anselmo. They petitioned the city councils, they got everybody on board, and if these rich cities can do it, you can do it too. And if you studied what 5Gs will do, that's a horrible thing that's going to happen too, because that will kill us. And this is something too, is that when you want to see more cancer increase, more kidney failure, get off your butts and call your local senators and your legislators in the State Assembly. Mullen.
Okay, Paul Coe. And then Donna.
At the last council meeting, we were advised that Mr. Williams was having a meeting with Superintendent Skelly from the San Mateo Union Unified School District, and I just wanted to be updated about what was the sum and substance of the meeting and what had transpired.
Can you speak closer to the mic, sir?
Okay, what had transpired and what updates you may be able to share with us.
So, Mr. Mayor, since this item is not on the agenda, I would be happy to give you my card, and then we can talk, and I can update you, and then we can actually put it on the agenda as an information item.
Well, it's a public meeting, so I think it's something that if you have the information, it's appropriate to share with everyone that's here.
Our attorney, please.
If I could.
Go ahead, Attorney enlighten the speaker.
So, let me know. So, I had a meeting with him, and I just laid out what the process for the school district proceed, that they would have to come to the city for a rezone, a general plan amendment. They would have to follow the same rules and regulations as any development would, and that was the, that was the meeting.
Rezone of which area?
Okay, all right. So, anyway, we can't go through this back and forth. The city attorney, will you please?
So, this is the time for public comment, and what typically happens is we don't engage in discussion because this is a matter that's not on the agenda. What we can do is follow up with you, as has been suggested by our city manager, and we can agendize the subject at a later meeting.
All right. Well, can I just continue with just one other comment? My concern is that it is my understanding the school district, if they are allowed to proceed with building housing, which is earmarked for staff and teachers, are not subject to paying property taxes. So, as a result, what will happen is that if the school district does not pay property tax, then the remaining residents of Milbrae will be shoulder with the responsibility of being responsible for upkeep of the infrastructure. And I don't know if that's ever been brought to the council's attention, but that is the understanding that I have, and if it's incorrect, I can have a meeting with not only Mr. Williams, but also the city attorney, and just find out what the tax implications are. Thank you.
Thank you. And Donna, oh, okay, Donna, thank you.
I was here last week as well. I'm regarding the teacher housing, and I am a teacher. I've been doing it for 34 years, middle school, and I'm against the teacher housing, so just, I'm being very transparent about that. I spoke with Mr. Friedman today at the Health Club and asked him about, does he have any issues with putting a teacher housing on a high school campus? And he said to me, "No, that's not going to be on a house, it's not going to be on Mills campus." And I looked at him, and I said, "What do you mean? This is Long Sequoia, and there's the baseball field." And he said, "No, we're going to put trees in between the school and the housing complex." I got to tell you, I was, I'm very rarely speechless because of what I do in life, but this was ridiculous. And I just thought, "Okay," and I walked off. I just, I couldn't deal with it. I mean, it was just ridiculous. Anyway, Milbrae has done, has said yes to Gateway and Sarah on Milbrae, and you just keep coming up, and now they want teacher housing. There was a parent at one of the, at the San Mateo Union High School District, I'm speaking very fast here because I know I have in three minutes, that was very concerned about having a teacher complex on a campus. It's never been done before. I mean, there has been teacher housing, but not on a high school campus. Dr. Skelly just said, "Well," and he did the same thing at the meeting in Milbrae, I think, last month, "Well, you can't worry about that." Well, the point is, if it does happen, and it has happened in the past at Mills, then wouldn't the school district be liable? A parent could sue. And then what would happen with the city of Milbrae? Can the parent turn around and say, "Okay, I'm going to sue the district, and I'm going to sue the city of Milbrae for allowing it to happen?" So, it's just food for thought. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not, you know, I'm just bringing these things up. Also, in Belmont, there has been a lot of discussion about neighborhoods where they have been building housing and apartment complexes, and I'm not disagreeing that these aren't needed, but the point is that they don't build enough or provide enough parking spaces for the residents. So, what's going to happen here with the teacher housing regarding people? Dr. Skelly says that people are not going to be driving cars, they're going to be using public transportation. And yet, Mills High School teachers, for the majority that I have been told, I do not want to live there. So, you're going to bring other people from other districts living there, and so maybe they'll have one or two cars. I mean, it just, where are they going to park? So, just wanted to bring that up as well. Also, the last bond measure, and I don't remember the last year it was in, but...
Your time's up, so you can summarize.
Summarize? Okay, so, they renovated a lot of high schools in the San Mateo Union High School District, but Mills was last on the list, along with Cappuccino. And then they put D-Tech, and then the parents really complained about that, and then they removed it. So, now, it's as if we're a stepchild. So, now we're going to put teacher housing on Mills High School.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Okay, we're on to the consent calendar.
Oh.
Yes?
Did you put your slip in?
Oh, I'm sorry. Must've got stuck in there. Jean, sorry about that, Jean. Thank you, Councilwoman Aliva. Sorry about that.
Hi, I'm Jean Perry, and I made a little visit to the Senior Advisory Commission this past week on behalf of a committee I volunteer with, with San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. And you're probably familiar with the Mental Health Services Act, which produces millions of dollars that come back to our county to support mental health services. And each year, we get a block of money for innovation. And we have partnered with 11 other counties to do an app that you can use on your phone or your tablet or your computer that promotes wellness. And we're in the process of getting public comment, of getting input from people, and I got great comments from our Senior Advisory Commission, and I wanted to let you know that this is going on, and Milbrae is having input into it, and we want to, we're having, Cal Mesa is coming next month, and they'll be having, what do they call it? I can't remember the name of what they call it when they have people come just specifically, a focus group, that's the word, focus group. And so, we'll have translation, so we'll be able to hear from all members of our community, and so we'll get the word out so that we can be contributors to this. These apps, it's a family of apps, and the one we're specifically working on right now is called Seven Cups, and it has these options to do little exercises to learn more about different things, everything from finances to depression to sleeping well. So, it's something that the individual can use on their own to promote their own wellness. So, that's what's happening.
Thank you, Jean. Again, apologize for missing, skipping you. Thank you, Councilwoman Aliva, for reminding me. Okay, any, I'm going to move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item five for consent.
Okay. All right. Anybody else want to pull anything else? Okay, do I have a motion for six, seven, and eight? Your votes, please. Oh, is it working? Still not working, right?
Oh.
No, it's not working. Yeah. Waiting for the regular meeting.
Items number six, seven, and eight on the consent calendar passed unanimously.
Okay, Vice Mayor Holliver.
Okay, so, first of all, thank you to the subcommittee for doing all of the interviews and for everyone who had applied. I do have a comment regarding the suggestion to have an alternate for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I think this is similar to the discussion that we had last time about the Planning Commission, since that is a semi, not that I know this person, but I think since that is a semi-formal commission, and we do have a city ordinance that we had approved stating that there are five members of the commission, doesn't mention any alternates, that I don't think we can appoint an alternate. think we can appoint an alternate, nor do I think we should because of the matters that that commission deals with. They work on impact fees, land use for our parks. So, I think it's important that we, you know, we know who the five members are and keep them accountable that way and an alternate's not needed.
Councilman Snyder?
I want to say thank you for the subcommittee because I like the idea of alternates. And I know we talked specifically that we couldn't put an alternate on Planning Commission, but do we know for a fact that we can't, even if we have to change the ordinance, get an alternate for Park and Rec? It was before my time, but we haven't had a young person, other than the council liaison, at Park and Rec. And to me, it's important to have multiple age groups recognized. And at least the person that they were recommending for an alternate is a young person who grew up here in Millbrae. So, it's nice to also be able to bring them along. So, I was really going to be happy to vote for that.
Well, I can understand the flexibility and the desire to have an alternate, but I do believe you should amend your ordinance.
Okay.
Make clear that that's the process.
Would we have to do that?
Would like to follow. For the Planning Commission, that's a state law, basically, you know, we derive our power on the Planning Commission, state law. But for your other commissions, if you would like to have alternates, I think we could put a process in place and reflect it in our ordinance. You know, how do you want this alternate to work? Would this be an alternate who would? I think your vice mayor raises a good question. I mean, if you want consistency on a commission that is providing policy advice to the council, do you really want a rotation and have a new person there every other month if someone's absent? I mean, I think you'd have to really think through how this would work and how it might affect the manner in which these commissions function and provide guidance and recommendations to the council.
So, a couple of years ago, we went and changed almost every committee or commission in one form or another, and each one has its own separate ordinance.
Yes.
So, if we wanted to add alternates to, say, Cultural Arts or Sister City, we would have to go back and change each ordinance?
So, we could do it in one ordinance.
Okay, that over...
We don't have to have separate ordinance actions in one ordinance, but you're right, that the code deals with each commission in separate sections or articles. But we can handle it in one action that would come to the council if that was your...
To the chair. So, I did actually take a look at this today, and from what I saw, the three commissions each had an individual ordinance that we had approved a couple of years ago, amending those commissions. The committees, I believe, were amended by resolution, and so I think that's a bit more flexible. And, you know, I don't have any issue with there being alternates on the other committees. They're more advisory, whereas I think Parks and Rec and Planning and maybe not Sister Cities, but those two at least are a bit more formal in their decision-making.
Understood. I think when Cultural Arts talked about, not Cultural Arts, which would dearly love as many new people as we can have added to them, since we are not filling any of the two vacant slots tonight, but Community Enhancement, the idea was that there are several people that have been attending each meeting, and then there are people that have dropped off so that if somebody missed a meeting, they could at least make sure they had quorum that night. It wasn't that they would alternate. It was when the regular identified people, if there was missing one, they would step up at that time. And it works because these people have been attending anyway, and it provides that consistency. So, I would love to see us make it official in whatever capacity we can.
Any other comments about that? Alternates, not alternates? You're bringing up...
Was this matter pulled for another reason?
It was pulled to discuss...
No, that's the only reason I pulled it.
Okay. Move to approve.
So, there's not the alternate, it's not...
Without the alternate?
Without the alternate.
Without the alternate? Yeah.
Can't make up your mind? Okay.
Item number five passed unanimously as amended.
And we also thank everybody who applied and those who did not, unfortunately, were appointed. Please stay involved. We hope that you can always go to the meetings. I know some of the current commissioners, they go to the meetings and then eventually were appointed. Yes.
And do we, will we be able to accept applications for Cultural Arts? Or is that application process closed?
Oh, we, no, it's always open.
Okay. Strongly encourage anyone from Millbrae to please fill out an application for Cultural Arts. There are two current vacancies. It's been a committee of three, and they have done some amazing things. The holiday celebration at the gazebo, the art show, the utility box. This September, they're opening up the utility boxes to art students from Cappuccino and Mills High Schools. They're really doing some fantastic things, but they could use help. So, if you've got a little bit of free time, second Monday of the month, that's their meeting time, please fill out an application. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Councilwoman Snyder. And now we've gone to the public hearing. I'm opening a public hearing to discuss in here an ordinance amending chapter 5.95, smoking control of Title V in the Millbrae Municipal Code to prohibit smoking in multi-unit residential housing and provide for regulating outdoor smoking in the vicinity of such units and outdoor spaces. This is the first reading, and this is asking to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance. Staff, thank you, Mr. Meiser.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, City Council. I have a very brief presentation for you this evening concerning a proposed ordinance to prohibit smoking within multifamily residential units and in certain outdoor areas. Just by way of background, back in 1988, the state of California passed Proposition 99, which was known as the California Tobacco Tax and Health Protection Act. That was a statewide, comprehensive tobacco control program that levied a 25 cent tax and created sales restrictions. From that revenue back in 1989, the county established a tobacco prevention program known as the TPP. Part of that campaign was to help educate the community on health and policy issues related to the effects of smoking. The county is also, in 2014 and 2017, one of their program goals was to reduce exposure to secondhand smoke by implementing smoke-free, multifamily unit housing policies. And then most recently, in, I'm sorry, in 2016, the California Healthcare Research and Prevention Tobacco Act also increased taxes. So, that set an excess tax of, including e-cigarettes, of $2. So, with that uptick in funding, the county, their budget has increased from $150,000 in fiscal year 2016-17, now to $784,000 in fiscal year 17-18. And again, that's to continue the efforts to educate and assist local communities. And then most recently, as you are aware, the San Mateo County Grand Jury was convened back in 2017-18, and they issued a report entitled Smoke-Free Multifamily Units, no ifs, ands, or buts. And that was a recommendation that cities should adopt ordinances prohibiting smoking in multifamily units, consider restricting smoking in housing, multifamily housing because of the negative effects that are associated with secondhand smoke. The city of Millbrae, we do have our own smoking ordinance, but it currently does not prohibit smoking in multifamily units. As you recall, earlier this year in our Saturday working session, when we talked about upcoming goals for the fiscal year, this was one of the priorities of the council, was to establish a new ordinance. And then we would not be alone. Many municipalities throughout San Mateo County have implemented ordinances or committees such as Belmont and Brisbane and Burlingame, Daly City, Foster City, to name a few. So, with all that input in mind, we finally have drafted a proposed ordinance. And so, this would be some amendments to our existing ordinance that we have on the books, chapter five. So, in your report, you'll note that we have that sample language for your consideration this evening. Essentially, we have new provisions that would be input into the new ordinance, provisions A through F. Provision A would prohibit smoking inside multifamily units as defined. Now, for anybody that is in an existing unit that had a lease signed prior to August 1st of 2019, they would be exempt until July 31st, 2020, or termination of that lease, whichever sooner. Provision B would prohibit smoking within any enclosed or unenclosed common area. Provision C would prohibit smoking within 40 feet of any unit or common area. Provision D would prohibit smoking within 40 feet of any service area, which essentially, like down on the sidewalk area, so within 40 feet of any unit or common area. So, that would really apply to projects as we start to see mixed-use projects. So, if you're on the sidewalk and you're smoking within 40 feet of a residential unit at the sidewalk level, that would, the ordinance would prohibit that. The ordinance would also require from landlords that they provide notice to their tenants, especially to new leaseholders, that there is a prohibition of smoking and that any violation would be considered a breach of their lease. And then last but not least, the city did consider an exemption for the smoking of medical marijuana. Now, you, council has probably received some input, as has staff, from those in the community that have some concern about that, and they're urging that we would treat smoking, smoking of medicinal marijuana, the same as we would smoking in any case. So, they're urging for a flat-out prohibition. Of course, that's a matter of policy for council to consider. There are other exemptions within the ordinance that would apply to owner-occupied duplexes and triplexes. And so, with that, we can have time for Q and A, but certainly our recommendation this evening is to waive the reading beyond the title and introduce the ordinance, amending chapter 9.5, 5.95, excuse me, and to introduce a prohibition of smoking in multifamily residential housing units, also providing for the regulation of outdoor smoking in the vicinity of units and in outdoor areas. And so, with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay. So, Council, we still have a pretty sizable stack of comments, too, so just keep that in mind. Councilman Snyder?
Okay. On one hand, yea, I'm glad we're going forward on this. On the other hand, Millbrae gets a D minus when it comes to smoking in the county. There are a range of things that need to be in smoking ordinances and enforcement of smoking ordinances to get us even into the B category. MFDs is one part, but it won't lift us much higher than that. So, I'm really disappointed that it took a grand jury study to do one additional ordinance in Millbrae. That said, if all we're doing tonight is MFD, when are we going to come back and fix the rest of the smoking problems? And I have a whole list of when I read through this ordinance, what I thought was clear or unclear. So, that's where I'm at. I will vote for this, but I'm voting for it unhappily because it's missing so much else. So, here goes, and I'm happy to give you copies of my notes. Community enhancement did bring this issue up. They've been working on this for a couple of years. I thought that this was going to come to community enhancement, and then the meeting was canceled. I was stuck in London anyway, but, you know, we have committees here for a purpose, and they had been working this issue and bringing in the county health department in to study and to show what could have been done. So, I'm disappointed that we didn't follow our own processes and procedures. Okay, we are building new MFDs, but we have existing multi, or mixed uses right on Broadway. If you look at Pete's Coffee, they have a bench, you have housing right above it. So, it's great to hear you say that 40 feet from the sidewalk is illegal, but I didn't read that in this ordinance. I did not hear sidewalk. I heard sidewalk is another category where smoking could still exist. My family, since I've lost a grandfather to lung cancer and my mom has COPD, I feel strongly about this. And we don't go downtown. If we do, we don't sit downtown because we're inundated by smoke from people on the sidewalk. So, the language in the ordinance about sidewalks, to me, is not clear. If it's going to say, if someone lives above our shops, which is almost the entire length of Broadway, from not halfway through the block, is that the 300-block, Dean's Produce on up, you've got housing units there. So, we're going to have to clarify the ordinance so that you know what you can enforce and what you cannot enforce. If, for example, Dean's Produce has employees who are smoking in back of the store, that is the backyard of single-family dwellings. So, what we have done by this ordinance is push employees into the backs of buildings where they're smoking and they're bothering single-family dwellings, but we're completely ignoring single-family dwellings in this ordinance. If I were one of those homeowners, I'd be really upset. I couldn't use my backyard without smoke bothering me all the time. So, I'd like to see that cleaned up. If we aren't allowing them, there's another language in here that says you can't sell cigarette products within 15 feet of an enclosure. Well, I can think of the, it's sort of a kitchen store down past Victoria or between Victoria and La Cruz, and they've got cigarettes right behind the cash register, and that's clearly within eight feet of the front door. So, the stores that are listed in here that would be allowed to sell, like drugstores or things like that, we're going to have to expand that list or at least check and make sure that the ordinance covers that type of business that has added the sale of cigarette products to the candy that they're selling at the front counter. Knowingly permitted by allowing ashtrays, does that mean that if a restaurant owner or Dean's Produce, as an example, and I'm trying, please, I'm not picking on Dean's Produce, I'm just using them as an example, Kinko's could be the other one, they put a cigarette area out in the back of their building, are they knowingly permitting smoking by putting an ashtray back there? To me, when I read the ordinance, it's not clear what we mean by that. I did the Pete's Coffee example. I'm disappointed that people who are living in multifamily dwellings get another year of inhaling cancer products. I don't understand why we're giving them a year other than a change in the lease. Is that the only thing we legally can do? It has to be that way? If it has to be that way, I can't argue it, but I don't see why it's not effective July 1st. I mean, either we're serious about cancer or we're not. I agree with the marijuana consideration. The new marijuana is, first of all, stink like crazy, but if I'm an employee that gets drug-tested at my employer and I'm next to a unit that's smoking marijuana, I could have enough of the TCH?
TC.
TC, whatever, in my bloodstream for it to be picked up and for me to cost my job. So, when Belmont first put in this MFD ordinance, I remember talking to their council members, and they were concerned that MFD ordinances would be more, hit harder on people of low income. Because I think in their ordinance, they required the use of ashtrays that absorb smoke. I don't know what those are called. I don't know if those work for tobacco products, but maybe that's something that we can consider in the marijuana component so that the smoke is getting absorbed into a unit or into a device within that single-family or multifamily dwelling and not moving around the complex. Belmont did some work on this. I don't know how far they went on it. On the signage, it talks about having a no cigarette. I think we clearly need to have no evaping, too. The evapers seem to go everywhere and think that they're perfectly at liberty to go anywhere they want to. On page seven of the staff report, it talks about dining area being an enclosed area. So, to me, that was confusing about outdoor seating. If we're going to encourage our restaurants to have outdoor seating, then we can't have the dining area mean only enclosed areas. So, the language is not as clear as it should be in the ordinance. Then under F, it talks about enclosed, and it mentions outdoor seating. At any rate, to me, it's confusing when I read the ordinance. And sidewalks, it wasn't clear to me if sidewalks are a public place. They seem to have their own definition. If they're a public place, that precludes smoking. If they're not a public place, they're allowed smoking. It seems like the ordinance is trying to say both things. There's no mention of flavored tobacco. There's no mentioning of targeting children, like the evaper store on El Camino, right by Cappuccino High School. We didn't go that far, and yet we've got a store right where children coming from one side of El Camino are crossing that store every day to get to Cappuccino High School. And that's how they target young people. And we need to be aware of that, and we need to have an ordinance that reflects that. And that's the general, which stores are allowed to sell tobacco and which aren't, and who's going to enforce it? And then I've got some specific areas. In section 9.95.020, smoking in city-owned facilities, there's a standing ordinance that says you can't smoke within 40 feet. Now, I've been to Kaiser a lot lately. Kaiser is, and their entire site, completely smoke-free, and they have signs up there that say you will not smoke on Kaiser property. Why are we not saying you will not smoke on city property, which means every park, which means spur trail property, which means any 40 feet from the front door here, that you're not smoking on city property? Again, are we serious? Are we not? I'm especially worried in fire danger that smoking on our parks and trails, it says, yeah, you can't... "Yeah, you can't, you can't smoke in a park playground, but you could smoke 10 feet away, and the smoke is going straight into the children playing on the jungle gyms." To me, that doesn't make any sense. You either can't smoke, or you can smoke.
Madam, excuse me?
I've got a few more.
I know, excuse me, but this is strictly for multi-use.
This is what's in the actual ordinance.
I know, but we're not modifying the whole ordinance. The night's proposal in the open hearing was for multi-residential property only.
Let's try to, let's just try to keep her calm.
Okay, then I'm going to do my last one. The SEQA, page 11, SEQA, no environmental impact. Right now, our smokers are dropping their cigarette butts in storm drains or in gutters. So, you know, no negative, no environmental impact. To me, this is not honest. It's just not true.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
And again, I'm voting on this grudgingly.
Okay, hang on. Can you let staff answer some of those questions, or?
No.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, just answer the questions that regards to this ordinance, please.
Right, right. So, again, the scope of what is before you this evening is very limited, and I get that. So, I understand if council's direction to staff is to come out with a much more robust ordinance, we'll certainly take that, we'll take that and go back and take a look at expanding different areas and different areas that we can, that we can govern. The genesis of this was about the prohibition of smoking in multifamily units. So, that's why you're seeing a limited, sort of surgical approach to the amendment to the ordinance.
Any other questions?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to clarify some other things. So, under, in the definitions under "our service area" in the proposed ordinance, it's defined as, it means any publicly or privately owned area, including streets and sidewalks, designed to be used or regularly used by one or more persons to receive a service, wait to receive a service, or to make a transaction, whether or not such a service or transaction includes the exchange of money. Then, further, under Section 5.95.25D, we are proposing, "Smoking is prohibited within any service area within 40 feet of a multi-unit residence or a multi-unit residence common area." So, I think we cover that issue of smoking on sidewalks and public places with that language and that definition.
So, it might be some code enforcement needs to be done.
Well, code enforcement, yeah, definitely, yep.
Vice Mayor.
And to follow up on that, we more or less have a de facto smoking ban downtown. Nearly everywhere is within 25 feet of a doorway, of a commercial doorway, which is the state law. I think one thing that, you know, it's not on the ordinance tonight, but something perhaps to consider, that, you know, this council decided to do a couple of years ago, I was not entirely comfortable with it at the time, was putting in the ashtrays downtown. I think we may want to think about taking those out because we are, I do understand that was done to discourage littering downtown, but we do have a very, you know, robust street-sweeping campaign. We have that new single-person-driving street sweeper, and by keeping those ashtrays downtown, I think we may be sort of contradicting the law that basically has a de facto smoking ban.
I ask the council to limit your comments to this one comment, because we're going to be going all over the place tonight.
Fair enough. I, just focusing on the actual ordinance, I think I agree with Councilman Schneider that we should not have the one-year exemption, that it should go into effect immediately or almost immediately. Other than that, I am very comfortable with the ordinance as written.
Councilman Aliva.
I have to disagree with the one-year, not putting that one-year leeway time for people that might need to find new housing, and there is a little difficult time with apartment searching or multi-unit searching. So, if, in fact, they need to find a city that'll allow them to smoke where they want to smoke, that maybe, that will allow for them to get.
We're not saying they can't smoke, just can't smoke in their rooms.
I'm going to stick to my guns.
Okay.
No, I think that's a valid point. I understand that.
Anyway, thank you, Vice Mayor Oliver. I just wanted to thank him for, he's been working on this doggedly for the last, what, four or five years, trying to get this going. And, yeah, and then, I know things take, City Hall takes a little, takes a little time, and thank you, City Manager Williams, for working, and staff for working hard on this. I do think that a year seems kind of long. I think that, you know, I do want to give the building owners some time to, you know, get the word out and that sort of thing. So, I think a reasonable time is three months or something, or something like that. And I agree with my fellow colleagues that it should be done right away, but I think that, you know, you have to give, you have to give the building owners some time to get the word out and give everybody a chance to comply and make plans. The other thing, too, is, my question is about the lease. So, you're saying before July 31, 2020, or one year after?
Yes.
So, I don't understand, because even in a multi, you know, are you talking about per lease, or you're talking about, because if you have 200 units in a building, and then, you know, some guy signs up for a lease on July, you know, 20th or something, on 20, you know, I know, you know, whatever, but you kind of get my point, but is that what you mean, or you mean by?
No. I'm saying that anybody who signs, who has signed a lease prior to August 1, 2019, is, in effect, grand-parented in until such time as the.
How's that going to work? How do you say, "Well, this apartment on this side is grandfathered in, and the next door is not"?
Can I help you out with that a little bit? I would say that most reputable property management facilities will not allow smoking in their apartments now, or their single-family homes. So, if people are signing leases, it's pretty specifically says, and it's very traditional to see, "No smoking allowed."
And if I, so what this says is, if you sign a lease before August 1, your grandfather, you're grand-parenting in until July 1, that's where you get the one year. If you sign a lease after August 1, it goes into effect immediately.
And they're also covered by the language of medical marijuana as well in most.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, through the chair. I think I would like to go with Mayor Lee's recommendation that we have, you know, a three-month phase in, and certainly no later than three months, you know, regardless of whether they start a lease before then or not. But, yeah, I mean, I live in a complex that prohibits smoking, and I think, if I were a landlord, I certainly would not want to lease to somebody who would smoke and would require significant, you know, cleaning after it's over. So, I think we, three months is a reasonable amount of time, but it's certainly not a year.
Councilwoman Pappen.
Number one, we can split the time, make it six months, go in between there. Number two, can we offer landlords' language to input into their leases? And number three, none of this is any good unless there's enforcement. So, we've had this issue downtown as well, as people throw cigarette butts everywhere, and I fought for like a year for a littering license. So, somewhere along the line, if we're going to take this seriously, it has to be strictly enforced. Thank you.
Councilwoman Schneider.
I'm trying to, I'm a landlord myself, I have smoking ordinances, and how it'll affect their security deposits, and I had it for years from the California Apartment Association. I use their language. But, if I am, I've signed a lease, I've got a lease sometime into 2020 or 2021, and now I can't smoke in my unit, does it, is, businesses, the airport, they create designated areas. I read the language in here on designated areas. Is there a way to, I'm thinking, so somebody doesn't try to find an apartment in the current environment when they're in there, that the apartment management has to find a designated smoking area for their smokers?
I don't know how you guys are going to plan to rewrite leases that exist, so that's, this is like, it's irrelevant talk. I think that we should all just say, "We're making a step in the right direction." It's realistic to think that it's going to take at least a year to even let the landlords know about this ordinance, and I would agree 100% with Councilmember Pappen. How are we planning to enforce this? This is like another dream come true if we're not going to sit here, we're just talking. We just need to educate people to be polite and be respectful of others, and to, if you have to go around with a code enforcer giving tickets, we don't even have that, but if we did, I mean, that's, we don't have anybody that's going to be able to mandate apartment buildings that are 30 units to see who's smoking in it. It's not, it's not realistic.
No, what's going to happen is a tenant next door is going to call it in.
But, hang on, Vice Mayor.
So, a couple of points. Number one, what were you saying? Oh, I believe the municipal code would supersede the language in the lease, right, if there's a discrepancy. So, I think that's pretty straightforward. I don't think we have to worry about that. Second of all, my understanding, I mean, I maybe need to read this over again, but I would imagine that the property owner would be responsible if there is a violation. Is that correct?
Correct. If we, if we receive a complaint, this ordinance would allow us to then come in and enforce the complaint. And that's a little bit different than what's happening out on the public street and the littering issue and all of that. So, this is more, will be enforced on complaint basis, and when we receive a complaint, then we have the ordinance to back up our enforcement of the violation.
So, then, the question is, the Vice Mayor suggested three months, six months. Where are we?
Well, you have, it's up to your opinion what.
Well, if I may, so, three months and six months, I mean, we're also going to do, because this is the introduction, there'll be a second reading, and within 45 days of tonight, the ordinance will be effective, if everything goes with the second reading. What I would recommend is just July, or July, January 1, the New Year, and in that way, with our fact sheet, getting information out to property management companies, owners of residential units, that's a very, I believe, good date to start, you know, as of January 1, 2020.
Vice Mayor, did you have a comment?
Or George Corey?
You have a comment?
I just said there'll be a lot of New Year's Eve smoking parties.
It'll be the cigar smoking on the bench at Safeway.
So, I had the, yeah, well, I, you know, I'm, you know, the problem with, I don't know, if you live in a unit like I did in the condos, you do smell, even because it goes up and it comes back in, and you get all sorts of odors, you know, fish odors, cigar odors, and, you know, now marijuana odors, and you don't want that permeating in your, in your room, because it stays in your room. So, I think this is something that's reasonable. So, let me, can I go to the public, or do you want, go ahead?
Sorry, one last comment. The other method of enforcement would be making a complaint, not just to the city, but to the, either the landlord or the property manager of the complex before coming to us, and, because I would imagine they would want to deal with it before the city gets involved, you know, if they're a reputable landlord.
One common practice in other cities is to give the neighbors, the neighbors in the surrounding units, the ability to enforce the ordinance, and you can do that through the leases.
Okay. One more comment before I go to public comments, is I, I've seen some signs around other cities that says, you know, this sign is 25 yards from, you know, the smoking boundary. Can we do something like that? Is that practical? Because I've seen that in other cities, and I think it's a good idea, because I've seen people like smoke right at the doorway. So, I think a reminder, it's a subtle reminder, says, you know, "You need to step away from, from the, you know." Okay.
I think that's a good suggestion, that the signage and placement would be within the area that you can't exceed.
Right. If you're smoking within this boundary, then, you know, you're not supposed to.
Can I just say, the devil's in the details. Let's say I'm a shop, I'm not a restaurant, and my storefront happens to be 25, 40 feet away from this area, and I get that sign in front of me, suddenly, I've got all the smokers standing in front of my store, and I have no ability, and it becomes my job to have to sweep those cigarette butts up every day, and they are toxic.
Yeah, I mean, so, we still have the, you can't smoke within 20 feet, you know, of an entrance, but, yeah, these are.
You want smoking downtown or not? How many people don't go to downtown because you cannot get away from the smoke downtown? That's what Millbrae is today.
Well, buildings are so close to 25 feet, so basically, you're pushing out everybody out downtown.
Yeah, it's pretty dense.
Anyway, back to, anyway.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, so, this is a public hearing on an ordinance. You, by motion, have to open the public hearing?
I think you opened it before this.
Yeah, I did.
Did you? Okay, I stand corrected.
That was the first thing I did, yeah. And so, we're going to, we're going to keep, no, we're not going to close, yeah, we still have a second reading.
Public comment.
We have a second reading, too, so, we don't do it until after the second reading.
I like it when the staff report is part of the hearing.
Okay. So, I have Yuri Carter.
Good evening, everyone. So, my name is Yuri Cartier, and I am a lifelong resident of Millbrae. I actually did Green Hills, Taylor, and Mills, and I live here today, and I have a background in public health. I have a master's in public health. So, I just wanted to come and express my support for this ordinance. I think it's a good move, and especially in light of the fact that the harms from second-hand smoke are very well documented, that there are lots of other places, cities around us that have taken this move already. It seems like common sense, why Millbrae wouldn't, you know, why wouldn't you extend the same protection, especially to vulnerable, more vulnerable populations like children and the elderly, and they're not, you know, you're not always at liberty to just move around and move away from the smoke. So, so, there's no reason why you shouldn't pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa Mulligan.
Thank you, Mayor Lee and Millbrae City Council members for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm a Millbrae resident, a mom of three children, and I live in the Bayview condominiums, which are at the top of Truesdale Avenue in Millbrae. These condominiums are converted apartments, and they're constructed with very thin walls and no fire sprinkler system. When I walk through our front doors of our lobby, more times than not, I'm hit with the heavy smell of cigarette smoke. And when I walk down our hallways, not only do I smell cigarette smoke, but I smell marijuana smoke, because it permeates our hallways, and it's coming from underneath the doorways of the individual, individual units. Last September, our HOA board wanted to update our CCNRs after 42 years, but the revision still allowed smoking inside of our units. I lobbied the board to insert language to prevent smoking, but the board president refused because his wife is a heavy smoker. So, I lobbied all the owners to vote no on the CCNRs. The aftermath of all this is that our board president quit. After nine months, our CCNRs have yet to be passed. Our residents are still smoking in their units, and all of our residents are still inhaling second-hand smoke. So, I thank you very much for working so hard on passing a multi-unit housing smoking ordinance. I've read it, I'm really happy with it. I do agree that medical marijuana should not be exempt from the smoking ordinance. It's a huge issue in our complex, and I also agree that we not wait a year. I did like City Manager Tom Williams' suggestion of a January 1, 2020 effective date. So, again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I apologize ahead of time, this is, I know, butchering your beautiful name, Smitha Gundavajala. You can correct me. I apologize profusely.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Millbrae City Council and community. My name is Smitha Gundavajala, and I'm a program coordinator with the Youth Leadership Institute in San Mateo County. I want to elevate the voices of Millbrae residents, especially those personally impacted by second-hand smoke. I'm going to start by reading a short statement from Giann Delara, who could not be here, but gave us permission to share this. She said, "My 100-year-old mother lives at Magnolia Apartments and has a smoker in the apartment next to her. You can smell the smoke in the hallway, and you can really smell the smoke in my mother's room. My mother is on oxygen and has respiratory problems. The Magnolia no longer accepts smokers, but she is grandfathered in. I'm constantly talking to Magnolia about the problem. They agree it is a problem and wanted to move my mother out of her apartment. I wanted them to move the smoker out." I wanted them to move the smoker out, but they didn't. My mother has been in her apartment longer. I've seen the smoker put live ashes down the hallway garbage chute many times." Okay, so that's just a short statement from a resident. But there are more than 3,000 multi-unit housing units in Millbrae. One in three occupied units is a multi-unit housing unit. And these would all be impacted by a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy. We know multi-unit housing comprises anything that shares a wall, apartments, condos, duplexes, and more. And in such close living quarters, our health is inextricably linked with that of others. Smoke can travel through plumbing, air vents and outlets, and it becomes clear that our choices are not staying within our home. But we cannot simply ask individuals to, quote, "make different choices." Ordinances are an important, important part of environmental prevention, shaping the environment so that it sets us up to be healthy and supports us in making healthy decisions. We have heard from residents that building policies alone aren't enough, and that landlords are unwilling to stake tenant relationships on enforcing their building policies. Ordinances are a tool for landlords to invoke and a signal that a city has made residents' health a priority. Smoke does not know the boundaries of private property, and neither do loud music and pets. We have ordinances addressing things like noise and music because we recognize their impact on others, regardless of whether or not they originate in an owned or rented home. Shared walls mean shared outcomes and greater collective responsibility. Tonight, I want to ask the council to pass a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy to ensure that the environment supports all residents in multi-unit housing: youth, older adults, low-income folks, people with disabilities, immigrants, and people of color. These groups often have less agency in simply moving out of unhealthy housing situations, and are at risk of facing discrimination, retaliation, and even eviction when they report to their landlords. A citywide policy would ensure equity, that all multi-unit housing residents have an environment that supports them in being healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Yang.
All right, good evening. My name is Randy Wong, and I work at Breathe California. We're a nonprofit dedicated to a lot of lung health issues, like helping families with asthma, clean air issues, and also a lot of tobacco-related issues. And I'm also a Millbrae resident. And I wanted to just, you know, thank the council for, you know, directing staff to develop an ordinance and to really, you know, consider a lot of the issues, a lot of the details involved in this. You know, we'd also, you know, we're also glad to hear that, you know, some of the council have interest in tackling other tobacco issues. We'd love to, you know, speak with you on, on those issues as well. But to speak specifically to the, you know, proposed ordinance tonight, it really is, you know, I think, to clarify a couple of issues, answer maybe some of the council's questions about ways to hammer down a couple of fine details of the ordinance that could really help with ease of enforcement in particular. You know, I think one of the principal issues that has been brought up is about medical marijuana. I actually think that's, you know, having it cover all types of smoke and vape, you know, whether tobacco smoke, e-cigarette exhaust, or marijuana, and all, all types of marijuana, is really going to be the way to, to make ease of enforcement happen for this ordinance in Millbrae. And also for health reasons, just, you know, that for the people being affected by secondhand smoke, whether or not the user next door is using something for medicinal or recreational purposes doesn't matter to that person in that unit next door. And also, you know, just, you know, keeping in mind the sensitivity, you know, to people who do need marijuana for medical reasons, we do also recognize that there are other ways of consuming marijuana other than smoking. In addition, talking about some of the issues related to kind of enforcement date, you know, we know that cities have a choice about when to have, you know, enforcement start. I would also agree that, you know, January 1st could be a very good option. You know, there could be cigar parties the night before, but, you know, that might actually be kind of the, the point. A lot of people really like picking January 1st as a New Year's resolution to do something new, to help themselves, their neighbors. It's something that would, you know, lead to ease of communication. You know, that's a very easy-to-remember date for people. So it's something I might encourage. And then other issues, just, you know, related to enforcement, or just as you hammer out other issues, we'd like you to consider all these. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to ask the speakers to try to limit their comments to something other than's already been said. I think we get the point. And thank you for supporting this ordinance. Francesca Moten? Lamontan? Sorry.
Good evening, council members. My name is Francesca Lamontan, and I'm with San Mateo County Health's Tobacco Prevention Program. The Tobacco Prevention Program is available to assist with ordinance implementation should the council adopt a smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinance. Some of the ways we can provide assistance include helping to draft ordinance notification materials, such as flyers and brochures, distributing notification materials, and providing no smoking or no vaping signs. The Tobacco Prevention Program also maintains a hotline that residents can call regarding secondhand smoke or tobacco-related complaints. For example, if a resident calls regarding secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing, we guide them through a number of steps to address their secondhand smoke concern. Such steps include, one, speaking with the smoker if they feel safe or comfortable doing so; two, speaking with their landlord or manager; and three, having our office send a letter to the smoker to request respect for neighbors and ordinance compliance. Our program has advertised its availability to assist with secondhand smoke complaints in a number of ways, including through our website, the San Mateo Medical Center, newspapers, and on the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition's Facebook page. Our program would be happy to increase its advertisement efforts in Millbrae to assist with any complaints that may arise after ordinance adoption. And we can serve as a point of contact for residents before city staff involvement. For your reference, the phone number for filing a complaint is 650-573-3777. Complaints can also be sent via email to tobacco prevention@smcgov.org. I hope this information will be helpful to you as you consider a smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinance for Millbrae. I also have a policy matrix that summarizes many of the smoking and tobacco policies adopted throughout San Mateo County for your reference. Please feel free to reach out if we can provide assistance. Thank you.
Can you repeat the phone number and website again, please?
Sure. Our phone number to report any complaints is 650-573-3777. We can also receive complaints via email at tobacco prevention@smcgov.org.
Thank you very--
Ms. Lamontan, were you the young lady that came to Community Enhancement?
Yes.
Thank you. You gave a great presentation, then. They've got great materials, which, when we roll this program out, maybe it's an agenda item for the future, and she can come and share everything that the county does. They really have a fabulous program.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And finally, Edwards Schlesinger.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. My name is Edwards Schlesinger, and I'm a visitor from San Carlos, a city similar to Millbrae in its mix of single-family homes, apartments, condos, and businesses. We had a similar problem as Millbrae had today, a wide mix of people affected by secondhand smoke, and a group of neighbors and myself organized to bring our concerns to the council, like what's happening here tonight. And with the help of the San Mateo County Tobacco Prevention Program, we did draft and pass an ordinance to regulate smoking in multi-unit housing. And our ordinance does include vaping marijuana and medical marijuana. It's worth noting that many landlords wanted and welcomed this ordinance as a way to improve their properties and prevent disputes between tenants. So now the dust is settled, things are good. My message, you know that many cities across the peninsula have done this. Millbrae can do it, too. I urge you to take advantage of the resources offered by the San Mateo County Tobacco Prevention Program. They're good people, and they can make Millbrae a healthier, happier place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Yes, just to follow up on one of the comments regarding the Magnolia of Millbrae. I noticed here that it says a residential care facility or assisted living facility is not included. I think we may want to include that in the ordinance as, as a multi-unit residence.
How would, how would you, how would you, what would you, how would you handle that situation if we included it?
Well, you tell them that they can't smoke in their, in their common area in the room.
The state law, the question is, does state law exempt--
P2, assisted living facilities. The definitions of multi-unit residents?
How many more bowling centers, either?
Those are governed by state law?
Is this something we can bring back on, on the second reading and still be consistent with the introduct?
Joan, can you speak into the mic, please?
We'll look, we'll look at that. I mean, when I saw it, we didn't originate the draft, so when we reviewed it and saw it, I, I was of the opinion, it must already be covered by state law, which is why--
Well, I think maybe if we could just have that confirmed by the second reading, that would be helpful.
We will. We will do that.
Okay. Councilwoman Pappen?
I would, after hearing the speakers, like to include, because it looks like they crossed it out here, cannabis, medical and otherwise, and vaping--
I would agree with that.
Okay, fantastic. And we also agree on the January 1st. Do you want to make a comment? Okay, just go ahead and just fill out the form afterwards. Yes, Councilwoman Snyder?
Do you want duplexes and triplexes excluded?
So if, if there's an owner of a duplex or triplex, and, and they occupy the duplex and triplex, we just felt that they could have an exemption because they can, and if they smoke, and it's in their own home, then they can control their lease and determine who they want to rent to or not on their own. So if, if someone's a smoker, they own the duplex, they live in the duplex, and they rent out the unit next to them, we figured that we would give them an exemption and not hold the owner subject to violating the ordinance in their own home.
And then a tenant who doesn't want to be around smoke would choose not to rent that location?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, if it isn't owner occupied, then this, this ordinance does apply. It's only owner occupied.
I believe our speaker is in that business.
Alice?
Oh, hi. Q and A. Mayors and council members, thank you for blowing up those ordinance. I just want to comment with how the assisted living about the non-smoking. I have 68 beds assisted living, which is 10 years already. From day one, we always tell any people intending to move in, the whole property line, non-smoking. And so far, we're very successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're voting on waiving the first reading and introducing the ordinance, right? We don't have, we don't have to close with, do we have to close the public hearing?
Yes, I would have you close the public--
Okay, can I have a--
If everyone has--
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Is there more, any more, okay, there's any more comments? All right. Please, let's have your votes.
I'm trying to think about what--
The motion to close the public hearing passed unanimously.
All right, thank you. Bring it back to the council. And the council has decided they wanted to, I guess, the majority wants to ban cannabis and vaping. And there's a question about assisted living facilities. And-- January 1st.
You need to clarify the sidewalks by existing residential units over commercial properties. I don't think the ordinance is clear. I think you're just going to get pushback.
So, so really, you're talking about a vertical issue?
Right. The Pete's Coffee Bench is the best example.
So that if you have residential on top of retail, does the 40 feet go up as well as, you know, vertically as well as horizontally?
And to me, the sidewalk language is written in two different places--
It could be, it could be clarified.
Okay, great.
We'll work on that.
Pointing that out. Okay, do you have a second? Can you, a second? Yes, thank you. Your votes, please.
Do you get that point? I will. I've got it down here.
The motion passed unanimously.
I understand that.
Okay, that's the motion to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance. Thank you very much, everyone. No existing business on to new business. Key Lim's Deputy City Manager and Director of Public Works. Thank you, Key.
Bench downstairs.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Key Lim, Public Works Director. I have my contact information on the slide. So tonight, in front of you, we have a final draft request for proposal in the agenda package for your review and comment, and this is related to the development of a data center on a city-owned property. So some background, I'll make it brief. The City Council Technology Subcommittee has been looking at developing a data center in, in our city, and one of the many sites that was looked at is the city storage, your Aviador Storage Site, right behind Bot Station. So the site is actually far within the Millbrae Station area-specific plan. We all know it as MSASP. The site is about 2.6 acre. And it is currently zoned as a public facility, which is allowed for a development of a data center with a conditional use permit. However, if the city chooses to proceed with the project, there are a few, a few amendments to the MSASP that we will have to initiate in order to make the, make the project viable. For one, the FAA is currently limited to 0.3. So potentially, we could increase the floor area ratio to 0.5. And also, the height currently within MSASP is capped at 35 feet. However, the height is also limited by FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration. And we look at the flight path map, we believe that the heights is zoned between 80 to 100 feet above mean sea level. And the size of, the contour of the site ranges from about, I believe, between 5 and 13 feet. So potentially, if, assuming that the height is 80 feet by FAA regulation, we could still put maybe a five-story building, very similar in height to the existing Millbrae Bot Station garage. Yep. So this is a site that I was talking about, the Aviador Storage Site, right behind Millbrae Bot Station, 2.63 acres, site that's currently zoned as a public facility. And this is one of the many concepts that we came up with and can potentially be used on the site as far as the building footprints is concerned. And we do need to be mindful, there is some residential setback back there, and there's also a 45-degree plane, based on some of the experience we all had in the last several years dealing with TOD-1. And here, just a listing of few of the constraints that I have mentioned earlier in the presentation. And finally, the project will be subject to the Airport Land Use Commission review. And this is a proposed timeline. With council approval, we'd like to circulate the RFP, the Request for Proposal, as soon as tomorrow, perhaps. And, and we will keep it open for about a month for questions, and any interested developer, or any of them, could submit a question to us in writing, either by emails, or mail it to us, or call us. And the site is also scheduled for August 16. And the deadline to submit the proposal to the city is at the end of August, August 30th, 2019. And the state will form a selection committee, potentially including several department heads and perhaps members of the City Council Technology Subcommittee. And we will spend about a month evaluating the proposal and interviewing the potential developers. And we are hoping to come back to City Council at the second meeting in October to make a recommendation, if we have one. And with that, I'd like to get any comments or questions from the council.
Councilwoman Pappen?
My primary concern, if such an RFP goes out, is that noise of such a facility and also appearance. Yeah, no. We say correct, however. The type of architecture or buildings that are going up in this region really are pathetic. And I don't think the neighbors would appreciate it if we just said, you know, throw up a box, and that's fine. So if we are requesting a proposal-- a proposal, the considerations need to be, what kind of noise impact will it be on the neighborhood? And we are expecting a structure which will enhance the neighborhood and not be an eyesore. Please.
That will be taken into consideration. Like I mentioned earlier, there will be a conditional use permit, and we are probably meeting to Planning Commission, and also there will be a CEQA process that we are going through.
If we could, for clarification here, because so many times, we hear CEQA, we hear it went to the Planning Commission, and then by the time it gets to this council, it's still unacceptable. So if there are some samples that we can look at in advance that we can say, yes, we like this style, or we like that, because the Planning Commission has no guidance whatsoever, and by the time it gets to this city council, the public's like, what happened? And why did we get this sort of a structure? So if we can lead the way and try to inform not only the council, the Planning Commission, but the public as to what type of structure they'll be anticipating, so that comments can be made early, that would be exceptionally helpful. Thank you.
And I would just add to that, if the council moves forward with, you know, greenlighting the RFP, we will have several neighborhood meetings with the neighborhood out in the area and go through the design integration process.
And perhaps we can also bring the project to City Council at a study session prior to the Planning Commission hearing.
Councilwoman Snyder?
Couple of process questions. Did we notify the residents that are right up against this, that this RFP was going to go out?
Not at this time, but we certainly can do that. We could send some notice out there along the Aviador neighborhood.
I think that's our first problem. So here's my second question. When an RFP comes out, or an RFP or RFQ goes out, typically, staff, and it's written in the documents, we don't communicate with anybody. If anybody's at home from Bayside Manor watching this, they're going to have questions. Can we speak on this, or do we need to be quiet and direct it to you, Key, as the point of contact until the results come back in? What's the process we should use?
Any specific question related to the developments of the data center should be directed to staff.
Can I just jump in here?
Yeah.
We don't even, if I may, we don't even know if we're going to develop a data center. I don't even know if there, you know, I assume that there's a market. This is an RFP to go out and see what's out there, to see if it's even worth spending any more time on our technology subcommittee. We've been approached by, you know, some other interest groups, and so what we're doing here is releasing this and testing the market to say, is there any, is this even viable? And then if so, then take it to the next step, because we've talked about it, but we just don't even know if it's real.
I just want clarification so that I don't, you tell me what I can talk about, what I can't talk about, I'm fine with that, when the public asks a question.
Vice Mayor?
Sorry, just to jump in through the chair. I know this says RFP, but the way I read it, it's really more of an RFQ than an RF.
To me, it is an RF. It is more along that line, but it could morph into something else.
It's somewhat vague in terms of, you know, it just says, here's the, you know, here's the space, and not a whole lot of detail about what we're really looking for here, other than just a data center. But sorry, just to interrupt--
So along the lines of Councilwoman Papin, I agree that this is, again, abutting a neighborhood area. It can go fairly tall. I've been talking to the city manager about noise, because for public information, I worked in a data center. I worked for Hewlett-Packard's Worldwide Customer Support Organization. We had computers of every type and handled all of our customers around the world in the center. So I'm familiar with what they're like, but that was also a long time ago. So I've heard that maybe a lot of them, I've heard today that one of these actually hit platinum lead in Florida, so maybe we can actually get a pretty amazing building. I'm concerned about the shading over the neighborhood with the heights. So I'm just telling you, if we get results back and you bring us a staff report, this is what would help my decision. So, security. To me, data centers are a terrorist target, so I just would like to know what kind of security we might have out there for that. It's already right next to other terrorist activities. Councilwoman Papin talked about noise. That site right now is the location of air noise monitor number eight. It's the one that the airport tells me differently. It only has A-weighted, it doesn't pick up C-weighted noise. So if we're going to do any work with noise, it should, we get downplayed on noise in Millbury, because there's BART, there's the train, there's the freeway, there's the airport. Therefore, we get to be noisier than any other place, because we have these other four noise systems. I will do my best to try to change that. You can't just keep layering noise, but I don't want this project to get caught into that. So just try to clarify the noise systems on that. I think this could be without the building. Maybe there's some green walls, maybe there's green building in that. It was my understanding, because this is next to a transit-oriented development, that they get to waive some of the green infrastructure rules, because that's what came up with the discussion of the Chevron gas station. If I'm wrong, I'm very happy. I'd love to see as much green as we can get into the building. So, and will it, will they be able to put any solar on there? They're very energy-intensive, so--
They guess they are.
What we can do to counteract the greenhouse gases that are related to that energy, if all of that could be something that you're going to report back to us, assuming that we have interest. I want to welcome them. I don't want to be non-welcoming, but I want us to make sure that we're taking in the fact that they run a lot of air conditioning units. Air conditioning units can be ugly and noisy. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all great questions, and we don't have the answer tonight, but we will get back to you on that.
And I'm sorry, one more. Sorry, council, because we're dealing with this, with the ground-based noise meeting, which is tomorrow, by the way, 10:30 here at Millbury, noise bouncing. If this building is construction, what will it do to the other noises? Maybe the materials can actually help absorb. So if we look at that, maybe it can actually help with some of our noise issues, as opposed to contributing to it.
Vice Mayor? Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you for those comments. You know, I agree, I think we need, certainly, I think design will have plenty of opportunities to work on that. I just did a quick search for data centers. They're not all, you know, concrete boxes. Some of them actually have pretty interesting designs. And, okay, one question that I had was in the map that was presented of the footprint. It's, there's 42 parking spaces that are drawn out, and, you know, my understanding is that these type of buildings possibly have, you know, one, maybe two dozen employees at any given time. So I think if we don't need, if, you know, if there aren't going to be 40, if it says 42 parking spaces, then I think the assumption is there'll be 42 cars coming in and out of that building throughout the day and night, impacting the neighborhood there on Aviador. So I think if that's not needed by the eventual operator, those could be potentially reduced and have some more, you know, open space or green space in the area.
Okay.
I would also imagine that, okay, sorry, one other question. In terms of the selection criteria on the RFP, you mentioned it's, let's see, qualifications and experience of developer, qualifications of personnel, understanding of the proposal and cost, including staffing plan and approach. So really, whatever the, you know, fiscal benefit to the city is and the business, we're judging more based off of the developers, sort of at a conceptual level, and their experience more so than, you know, who's going to create the plan that brings in the most revenue to the city.
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. So once we've selected who we believe is the best developer, then we would have the ability to negotiate with them on the business case and the details of--
Correct.
Just like the digital sign, I assume.
There are a couple of options that we were thinking about, either as your developer agreement, sharing revenues, or we can do a franchise agreement with the operator.
Okay. And franchise agreement sounds pretty interesting. So, sorry, so I would imagine at that point, we would likely, you know, I don't know if we have anybody on staff who's worked on developing data centers, but we likely would have to bring in some type of a specialized consultant who really understands the business well, to be able to work us through this at that time. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the point is, is that instead of hiring somebody that says they can generate the most revenue for us, we want to go out and find an experienced developer that actually does this--
And negotiates with the details.
And then, correct, right.
Councilwoman Snyder?
Kind of a dumb question. You're looking for a 99-year lease, and with, I'm wondering, would you even have a data center building survive 99 years? That if you put that in there, you might be limiting some of the choices. My experience in Silicon Valley was, for a lot of the concrete tilt-up buildings, they've got a 30-year life. Now, that, the part of me that's a recycler and a zero-waster hates that, hates the fact that we plan commercial buildings with 30-year lives. But a 99-year lease might, who knows what the technology will be 25 years from now, let alone 99. So maybe some flexibility in there.
Perhaps I can just eliminate the 99-year land lease, the city will enter into some sort of a land lease, where they develop a long-term land lease, but not specifying how many years.
Okay.
So--
And it will not be a concrete tilt-up building, just to let everyone know.
Something rolling earthquakes, you know, that's one advantage.
This is the first time where we actually get to dictate the design and not actually have somebody--
I kind of like the, I just want to express, I kind of like the idea of a data center, because it's not just the money that you make from a data center, but it was what brings along with the data center, which is high-speed internet, which would put Millbury on the map, and hopefully, put the county on the map. Also, opportunity for franchise fees, in which makes the city opportunity to make additional revenues, and maybe provide internet and TV and telephone services to our citizens. And also, the possibility that it will definitely attract the high-tech businesses to our city and attention. So I think that there's a lot of upside to this, so I hope that we explore it diligently.
Councilwoman Aliva?
I think everything that you just wrapped up with is what the tech committee was looking for. And with regards to the shape and the location of this parcel, it made sense to look into this.
It's very low impact on the community. And so, and in terms of industrial impact, it's very, very low.
Chemical-wise?
Yes, in many, many ways, maybe traffic-wise, maybe even noise-wise, security. Definitely have security. My question about parking spaces, do we have to rezone it, because we have these ordinances about, you know, so much parking spaces for so much, you know?
I don't think we need to. Yes, Key mentioned, with the zoning and general plan designation, there's a conditional use permit that would be required. Other than that, it does fit within the underlying MSASP zoning and general plan designation.
Okay.
One other--
One last question.
One other consideration that's come out of talks about bike pedestrian and how to get people from one, the west side of the train tracks to the east side, was looking, and because that was city property, of putting a bridge over, at one time, it was along the edge of 500 Hemlock, and it pops over 500 Hemlock, pops over the tracks if you had an overpass over there. I don't know if that could happen, because typically, these types of buildings are security buildings, little higher security. But we still have to be talking about how we're going to get people from one side of the tracks to the other side in a safe way. And VPAC, not the current format, but I know Commissioner Del Negro and I have had many talks about how to get people and bicycles from both sides without going over Millbury Avenue.
Okay, thank you. So that's informational. Thank you.
Actually, if I may, to sum up some of the revisions, the requests for information, requests for qualification, or requests for proposal. So we'll get rid of the 99-year land lease in lieu. We'll put in a long-term land lease with a selected developer, and potentially, we will eliminate that exhibit on the RFP by not showing that site laid out. We just show the original vicinity map and the flight path.
Okay. Yes?
Any other revisions that council would like staff to make?
Parking.
You need to be clear about the setback.
Yeah, setback is 20 feet per the existing MSASP plan, planning--
And 45 degrees.
Forty-five feet--
Degree angle.
Forty-five degree plane, 20-foot interior setback, and the current height is 35 feet, but we can do a MSASP amendment to raise the height below FAA regulation, and also potentially changing the FAR, increase it--
That's good.
Better utilize the site.
That's good for me. Anybody else?
Yeah, on the parking, I don't mind having some type of parking there, but I think just don't say 42 spaces, just, you know, right parking area or something like that.
Yeah, the other thing about parking is that, you know, some of the stuff that we've kicked around, just as staff, is a pedestrian bridge from the BART parking garage, actually, to the data center site, if that would be feasible, and then we could really eliminate a lot of the parking and keep it as buffer, it opens, yeah, yeah. So that's the type of thing that we'll look into.
You know, I had thought that data centers typically don't have a lot of employees, but I'm wondering if they're also selling some aspect of customer service, in which case, they would have technical engineers on site, and then it becomes almost a tiny bit of a call center. Otherwise, I couldn't figure out why you would need that many parking places either.
I think we did that just to show, based on the standard width and dimension, how many parking spaces could fit. So that's just conceptual. It's not, we're not proposing that. Because I agree, I don't think data centers actually do employ that many--
Councilwoman Papin, did you have a, okay, then we're done. Thank you, Key. All right, next, considering formation of the City Council Ad Hoc Subcommittee to address opportunities for economic development and strategic alliance with San Francisco International Airport.
So yes, just to brief the council, this is something that the mayor had requested that we place on the agenda as part of our economic development efforts and further outreach to San Francisco International Airport. It was, I found out that actually, the city of Burlingame, their Chamber of Commerce is now the Burlingame SFO Chamber of Commerce. And us being this proximity to SFO, I agree, I think that there's so much more that we can do in terms of partnering with the airport, finding out more, you know, if they employ over 40,000 people. We know that there are over 50 million passengers today. With their new plan, they want to achieve a goal of 75 million passengers annually. How do we capture that? How do we become their partner? How do we become, as mentioned before, kind of the fifth terminal? How can we advertise, you know, within the terminals, transportation, and really reaching out? So that would be the purpose of this ad hoc subcommittee, to just do some fact-finding and further partnering with SFO.
And they also have a trolley that goes to the airport to the downtown Burlingame. They've been doing that the last 10 years.
That's sponsored by the hotels as well. So, comment? Yes, I think it's a good idea. The mayor and I actually interviewed someone, a resident here, who, they have quite a system at the airport, as far as retail goes, ground transportation, and their access to employees taking our station area. I would like to volunteer, if you want--
Okay, great.
--to help with that.
Okay, is there any other comments? No?
Gina would be great at that.
Okay. I'd like to be on that committee as well. So let's take actions. We need a motion. Thank you. Your votes, please.
Item number 11 passed unanimously.
Thank you. I like those types of discussions. All right, so council comments. I start with Councilwoman Snyder. So, you know, okay, can I go to Vice Mayor? Is that okay?
Sure, I can do this on the fly. So let's see, so the MCTV Board of Directors met last week. They have a new director or station manager on staff now, and Dana has resigned from the position for her family. Sarah Johnson, I believe that's her name. So welcome aboard on the new, on the MCTV. Let's see, the Sister Cities Commission met last night. There is going to be an update of the commission website. They're bringing it more into the 21st century now. So, great job on that. There was also some discussion about perhaps having, trying to renew the relationship with La Sraena Chile, which has been dormant for many years. Unfortunately, the last council general who had come to visit the commission has now been reassigned to another position, so there's a new council general. I know Council General Vella from Malta is trying to make that connection to get the La Sraena connection going again. The commute.org board, Peninsula Congestion Relief Alliance Board, met last week. There was a discussion of the San Mateo County TA's priorities. There's actually a survey that's going on right now. I don't have that information on me, but perhaps we can-- I don't have that information on me, but perhaps we can get that and get it out on social media to, you know, identify some of the, both the vision for the TA as well as priorities going forward. And I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Who's ready? Anybody? Councilman Oliva?
So, as usual, the senior advisory committee was very productive. They had the presentation from Jean, who's still here tonight, about the Healthy Wellness App. And she did mention briefly about the seven cups, and I thought that was kind of a cool thing because you have seven cups of coffee with somebody before you know them and understand them kind of deal. It was a very cool thing, cool, whole little idea. Also, senior advisory committee was wondering if they could, and it seems fit tonight to talk about or ask for this, all the properties that are owned by the city, can we get those posted on the website? Because we're always talking about we own this prop. Well, yeah. One for sale, one for the data center now, and now one we just talked about on the new development, Calvano Development. I want to compliment our mayor on the state of the city. Thank you very much. That was a really nice job. And congratulate Rob Decode for the new Lions president. That was good stuff to read about on social media. And also, we had our applicant from, for the planning commission, Steven, and he had mentioned that he was going to be on Jeopardy. And so, I thought maybe bring you to my compadres here that we might want to host some TV or something to watch. If somebody could find Steven, I don't know where he lives, but it'd be kind of fun to find out when he's going to be on, and we can all have a celebration for him.
That's a great idea. Are you ready?
As I mentioned earlier, the San Francisco Airport Ground Base Noise Ad Hoc Committee is here in Milbrae tomorrow morning at 10:30. The purpose of this meeting is to make sure that we've identified all of the areas that should be studied and all of the possible hills and dales because sound bounces. So, we're trying to make sure that as we move forward, we know where the noise is being hit. So, if you are watching on TV and you're getting that low, grumbling noise at your location, pop me an email so that I can plot you. We're basically a subcommittee of Hillsborough, Burlingame, Milbrae, San Bruno, and Brisbane, with Pacifica helping us with this. So, that is tomorrow morning at 10:30. It isn't videotaped because the rec center isn't designed for that, but it is audiotaped, so you can listen to it. And it's a little bit more back and forth. The public can come and speak. It's not quite as formal as, say, the roundtable meetings are. The ground base, or Grand Boulevard meeting this month is canceled. It's been moved to September. They're thinking of how to reorganize themselves to do something now that so much of El Camino has been built out. So, they consider in some cases their work is done, but I don't think they've come up and seen maybe our part of El Camino. But that'll be in September, so I'll be coming back and asking you. CCAG and Gina can probably talk more about this. CCAG voted on the new members for the new flood and sea level rise resiliency district. So, representing our district is Donna Colson from Burlingame. Dave Pine and Don Horstley are the two supervisors. The member at large is Mary Ann Durwent, the mayor of Portola Valley. The mayor of East Palo Alto and Debbie Ruddock, the mayor of Half Moon Bay, are on this new district for sea level rise. I'm sorry? Oh, I missed somebody. I missed Diane Pappan.
Oh, yeah, that one.
I'm sorry. Diane Pappan is from Central. So, Diane Pappan is on this new sea level rise board that we voted on a few months ago, where it has regional representation, but not every city representation on it. Emergency Services is meeting this Thursday. We will be talking about Get Ready. I don't know if everybody received their PG&E, How to Get Your House Ready for Fire Danger, and the letter that talks about how they're going to have brownouts if they think that the winds are going to knock down a power supply. Now, we tend to think of those in rural areas. City Manager Williams, I have a copy of my letter that I received. But all of this is kind of interesting because on July 11th, we're having our first organizing meeting with the police, the sheriff, the fire department, CERT, any member who's working on the community to get ready for natural disasters for an event that we'll be planning for in the fall. There's no date set for that yet, but lots of information is coming through. And I think with that, I would love to get back to bike sharing. We don't get to talk about it much, but city, we've got, I know Park and Rec has rolled out so many great projects. Having just come from Italy where they have bike sharing in even the smallest cities, they have AED devices on walkways in small towns. It's amazing what some little, what you can learn from other communities when you're there. And I'm buying a scooter because they're really cool-looking. So, when I sell the van, my next car is a scooter. With that, I would say that, you know, if your community group is working on Get Ready issues, please contact us so that, I talked to the police chief earlier today, we want to make sure everybody who can help plan this event is involved in that event. And ABAG, City Manager, I have the budget for ABAG for you. I want you to know that I was able to get noise, meaning airplane noise, added to their agenda for their environmental issues and particulate pollution. So, we'll be talking about particulate pollution at Emergency Services this Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pappan?
Thank you very much. Compliments to everyone who attended Movies in the Park. Lots of fun, as always, this last, so it's the last, what, our third Friday of the month moving forward. I hope you can all join us there. Also, July 4th is the Historical Society's barbecue. Pardon me, do you?
They have openings.
And they have openings as well, yes. Central Fire has an event tomorrow at 5:00. Pink Ribbon Girls. I think one of the fire trucks is going to be pink. So, and also Self-Help for the Elderly had a fantastic fundraiser, Satch Gala, with an amazing entertainer and a great group of people, the master of masks, was it? Unbelievable.
Pace changing, yeah.
Yeah, that was spectacular, and I believe they raised well over $100,000 for Self-Help for the Elderly, which was great. And I really and truly want to thank Milbrae staff, City Manager Tom, Elena, Brad, Jen, Jennifer, and Linda on the bus tour, the MTC bus tour, all the cities that participated, all of their staff. We had a full bus of some, over 50 participants. Thank you to Genentech for providing the electric bus. It was spectacular. Roseanne Faust from Samseeda, Don Cecil, and seriously, all the cities that stepped up and presented what they have done and where they are heading. It was educational for all of us to see the different cities and what they're offering. I think it was really enlightening to the MTC staff and commissioners that were able to participate. It was a difficult time for the boards of supervisors because they're all doing budgets, but hopefully the information will trickle down as to what's happening in our community. And we still have a long way to go in educating them. Prime example was a recent report on an office cap in five cities in our county. Number one on their list was Colma. So, to say that they don't understand the San Mateo cities would be an understatement. I think most of us know Colma's a necropolis where three San Francisco mayors are buried. Who else we have there? Joe DiMaggio, a whole bunch of people. That only 25% of their land is actually usable. They are housing permanently, 1.5 million residents. So, I think that's sufficient. But we have a long way to go, and we will be hopefully educating them further throughout the community. San Mateo County, the 20 cities that we are, we don't have one mayor. So, we're working on branding. This is a very unique community with close, we're probably reaching a million people very soon, not to mention the jobs and the economic strength of this region, and, as we know, traffic. So, this is, the goal is to try to relieve all of that and still maintain a quality of life for everyone. So, I look forward to working with everybody. Again, city staff did a fantastic job in pulling this together. I have a day job, and if it weren't for y'all, that would not have happened. Also, our local business, Nothing Bunt Cake, was very helpful. Thank you to Carol. So, we all, I think, proud of everybody who participated. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and you know, on that, it was, you know, and thank you also because, like you said, you have a day job, and I think you probably stayed up three days straight for that. But it was a great team effort, Samseeda and Don Cecil and Roseanne and our staff here. It was really a successful event, so, thank you.
And thanks for staying up and baking some goodies too for...
Yeah, we had to add a little Greek food. Just had to be my part.
I was very impressed by the tour, and I hope that City Manager Williams and we really pull together that video you've been talking about, about our housing investments. And I think that would supplement the MTC tour that Councilwoman Pappan worked so hard on. And thank you for being innovative. That was a very, very good event. And I was really impressed by the fact that all the cities sent the representative, and they weren't just flunkeys, they were high-level directors and city managers, and they were very, very engaged, so...
And if I could point out one thing too, the timing of it was great because South City just passed an ordinance that week. They are going to raise their housing limits from 10 to 15 stories. San Bruno also approved enormous housing developments along El Camino. So, the timing was spectacular for a lot of cities to really show what, show their stuff, and it was impressive. We look forward to much more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, and also, we just thank everybody for Chamber and for sponsoring and hosting the State of the City. South San Francisco Scavengers donated, the Council General of Malta, Starbucks, Trader Joe, thank you. Who else did I miss? And Leonardo's provided the food, I believe. And most of all, I'd like to thank staff because staff, it was an incredible week. You only did the State of the City, but you also did the commission, the committee reception, and of course, you did the MTC. So, I don't know where you guys find the time, but we appreciate that. And then, the movie in the park was great. I just asked that maybe the screen could be moved so then we don't have to look up because my neck hurt. And many people made the same comment. But, you know, it was a great event nevertheless. And thank you for pursuing the ground-level noise. Sorry, I won't be able to make that ad hoc committee meeting. And PCE, they are providing grants for low-income houses to purchase used plug-in vehicles, and they're giving out grants for EVO charging units. I believe we're putting some units in the city, right? In the parking lot? Sorry. Oh, yeah. Yeah, go ahead and mention.
The EV Go grant, you're correct, Mr. Mayor, on the parking lot right off of the, I think it's the 300 block of Broadway?
The 400.
400 block of Broadway.
Okay, because people have been asking me what was going on. I didn't know.
Yeah, those are EV Go charging stations and a grant that we had received. And those are the high-powered, fast-charging.
Yeah, so that'd be great because I know people drive all the way to Cerro Ramon just to get charged and shop there. I'd rather they get charged here and shop here, so that'd be awesome.
You have to add some test.
You go ahead. Go ahead. No. Sorry to interrupt. The City Manager, can you describe the station access grant that we received last week?
Yes, so this was a joint effort, and again, my compliments to our city staff in the engineering side, community development, economic development. But it was a grant that we had to quickly put together in partnership with core communities, the developer that's building the affordable complex on TOD2. And so, all in all, we received a $3.5 million grant for pedestrian and bicycle improvements around the transit station. And so, that will extend from the transit station north to Center Street, and we'll be able to connect and work on enhancing our bicycle and pedestrian access around the station. Also, BART received a $3.5 million grant for improvements at the station and for access as well. So, we'll work closely with them and core communities. And then also, Key, I believe there's a widening of the sidewalk from the Bay Trail over the 101 overcrossing on Milbrae Avenue. That's a part of it as well. So, terrific, kind of staff dropped everything. Key's crew in the engineering side did a great job getting all the information and data together. And we were the number-one project in the state of California, and we competed with some pretty significant projects in the LA area, Orange County, throughout the Bay area. So, it's a huge accomplishment. So, yeah, and I didn't do anything. It's the staff, so they did a great job. Can't say enough great things about what they're doing.
And also shows the importance of Milbrae too, so that's another factor.
Absolutely.
And also, just to conclude my statement about the State of the City, I also want to reiterate the fact that we are looking at a million-dollar deficit in the near future. So, we're looking at, again, employ counsel to work as hard as we can to find ways to generate revenues. I really don't want to go to our citizens for, keep taxing them. I think they're getting tax fatigue as evident from them turning down the II, Measure II for the community center. So, I think that we don't want to cut services either, so let's look at ways to generate sustainable revenues for the city. And again, I would just like to congratulate and thank Charlene O'Connell for her long service. Anything else I forget? Anything else? Okay, so we're going to go to closed session. I adjourn this meeting.[1607.88]